When it comes time to vote, it's when it'll pick me up. One mouth. Stick you out on that boat yet?
Well, I don't know how they do that yet. It's those sections.
One mouth.
The man, the man out.
Or the chair.
The chair.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna get up to speaking to this mic 'cause it doesn't pick me up from where I sit at. I'm gonna see if I can.
The chair is right there. You'll have to sit down here in a minute.
All right, yes ma'am, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. It is 7:02, but we understand it's a little rainy out there. We're glad everybody could make it out tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and start with a call to order. And an approval of the agenda. My name is Mayor Jordan Marlowe. I'm the Chair for the City of Newberry. I'm joined with Chair Anna Prizia for Elatua County Commission. And we're gonna be, since this is a joint meeting, we kinda go back and forth. Each board has to vote. So I'm gonna give the opportunity for our guests to approve their agenda first.
Hello, welcome everyone. It's great to see so many faces out here tonight. Thank y'all for having us. We look forward to hearing from you. Um, I guess we usually do our welcome and invocation before we do our adoption of the agenda. You all adopt it first? Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds, so I think we're in good shape. Is there any comments on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. We'll do the same thing, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it was published? I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Clark. Any comments, questions on the motion on the floor from the dais? Public comments, question on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And I would like to invite Reverend Joy Glanzer to the podium to give tonight's invocation. If you would rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, it will follow directly. Reverend Joy?
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, we come this evening with many voices, many faiths, many opinions. But may our focus be singular, to be fair and just, with the desire to make decisions that promote harmony and progress. In the sacred duty to govern, may our representatives hold the responsibility entrusted to them with humility and integrity. Grant us the strength to work together, rising above any barriers that may divide us, fostering an atmosphere of cooperation. With all the division in the world, may we be the beacon of unity. We ask now for your blessing to be upon each member present, to hear the people's voices, and to the best they are able to move our communities forward in a healthy, sustainable way. In your divine name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you Reverend Joy and Commissioner Clark for leading us in the pledge. Um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, all the elected officials up here like to hear frequently and often from our residents. So we set aside a brief public comment time at the beginning of each meeting. These are two-minute public announcements type of comments. Uh, I know that we've got some elderly folks that don't think they can make it here tonight. I still have to hold you to the two minutes, but if you wanna use this time to say what it is you wanna say, there is a five-minute public comment at the end of the night. And then, of course, at the end, uh, for every agended item, you'll have the opportunity to have public comment as well. So, public comment of anything you need to announce, if you've lost a cat, if you got a garage sale coming, that kind of thing. Now's a perfect time to do it. Cue up, if there is none, then we will move right along. Okay, seeing no public comment, that's gonna take us to our first discussion item, which is, I believe, the Elatua County's gonna update us on a couple of y'alls. And I'm losing all the managers. Where they, oh, there they come, all right, welcome.
All right. Uh, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Andy Christman. I am the Program Manager for the Elatua County Land Conservation Program. And I'm gonna be giving an update today on the tree planting program. I think many of you may be familiar with or have met our county arborist, Lacey Holtsworth, um, who has worked within the City of Newberry and throughout the county to expand the canopy, the green infrastructure within the county. Um, she has completed her first five years managing that program, the tree planting program, and is looking towards things that will improve our ability to work together with tree establishment in the next five years. Uh, the tree planting program operates in site selection, looking at a couple of key priority areas. And these were established by the Board of County Commissioners through some effort and discussion about five years ago when Lacey started, to identify the areas that would most benefit the citizens, both within the municipalities and within the unincorporated portions of Elatua County. The first priority are areas where there are road segments, where trees can contribute to traffic calming, and also areas where pedestrians may gather to approach and utilize common public spaces, like approaches to schools, commercial centers like shopping centers, employment centers, service centers, libraries, areas like that. So Lacey's been identifying and trying to plant within areas of those types. And then the second priority type of area that Lacey has pursued have been locations that shade and buffer pedestrians moving along building lot recreational facilities like parks. So areas, again, where community and citizens gather to utilize public spaces. Over the five years that she's been managing this program, she's planted over a thousand trees. And those have been throughout the county and within every municipality within the county. Um, so she's been successful reaching out and building bridges across the county in all different sites. Within the City of Newberry, she has planted sixty trees to date and is looking forward to other future potential opportunities to provide more trees for the city. Um, that has been through an Arbor Day celebration at this facility here, shade plantings near Oakville View Middle School, and also shade plantings near Freddie Warmack Park on Newberry Lane. And if you can, this doesn't have a pointer, I don't think, but they're the green spots on the map there. Those are all community plantings largely conducted through the efforts both of county staff, but also host sites like each municipality, in this case, the City of Newberry, and through the efforts of volunteers from throughout the community. And in this image, you can see, these are all sites in Newberry that were received tree plantings. Looking forward, Lacey has been really investing a lot of thought in trying to determine what is the best way to continue to grow the tree planting program in a way that provides long-term sustainable benefit, both for the citizens and the municipalities with regards to the trees that she's planting. One of the things that she has identified is that an inter-local agreement established between the county and the City of Newberry and each other municipality would provide longer-term protection and care for these trees once they have been planted. When Lacey does a tree planting, county staff typically provides the first three years of establishment maintenance, so that's watering and pruning and trimming to help those trees have an excellent form and survive. But beyond that, an inter-local agreement would both help bridge gaps for future planting sites, but additionally help to provide greater protection to those trees from maybe accidental damage that might occur through other activities within the area. So, um, we don't have the inter-local ready to bring to you today. We do have the document ready, but Lacey is going to be reaching out to each municipality to see if you would like to enter into an inter-local agreement and to work with your staff to develop that agreement for signature by the city and then also signature by the Board of County Commissioners if you are interested. Are there any questions or comments?
Any questions from our board? All right, thank you ma'am, we appreciate that so much. We appreciate all of the trees that you guys have helped us plant in Newberry. Uh, she taught me a whole different way to plant a tree, and I'm very grateful. They're a lot healthier now.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm also the next one.
Thank you so much. Do we have, uh, well, this is a presentation, so we just, we just received the presentation right now. All right, um, so our next presentation is Conservation Lands, is that you as well? Okay, go right into Conservation Lands.
Great. Um, again, Andy Christman, Program Manager for the Land Conservation Program with Elatua County. I'm going to be giving the first of a series of presentations on the utilization of the Infrastructure Surtax Funds from the Infrastructure Surtax that was passed by the voters of Elatua County in November. The portion I'm going to focus on is the portion that's gonna be utilized for the Conservation Lands Program, which is also known as the Elatua County Forever Program. You may recall that this Surtax, which the voters passed, was a ten-year Surtax for a full cent. Um, of that, a half cent is being split between Conservation Lands projects and active park projects. In that split of that half cent, um, the total projected revenue for that half cent, and this is a revenue projection from the state, and it assumes a certain amount of growth, four percent growth annually, um, the total revenue that's projected is a hundred and ninety-four million dollars over that ten-year period. Six million dollars off the top is being utilized for joint projects with the municipalities. And of course, at this time, each municipality is receiving a direct disbursement from the state as well. So what I'm speaking about is just the county's disbursement from the state. Eighty, the Board of County Commissioners decided in February that eighty percent of that half cent, that's been known as the Wild Spaces and Public Places Half Cent, is going to the Conservation Lands Program priorities, and twenty percent is gonna be supporting the Active Park Program priorities. Conservation Land Program priorities include purchase of conservation lands for county preserves, but also as conservation easements. And there's, um, within our Conservation Land Acquisition Program, going to be an increased focus on conservation easements in this coming ten years. Preserve infrastructure development, that's providing parking lots, hiking trails, trailheads, bridges, footbridges, um, infrastructure that supports nature-based use of those preserved lands, and then some operation and maintenance funding for those preserves. The parks portion, um, one of our other staff in the parks program will speak about in greater detail, but may include active park improvements, new park acquisitions, and then operations and maintenance of those parks. Our two programs, Conservation Lands and Parks, work together collaboratively. Um, we both provide public access and utilization of the sites that fall under our management, but the Conservation Land Sites are more what we call nature-based or passive recreation. So it is typically more bird watching, mountain biking, hiking, equestrian use, um, not a lot of paved or developed infrastructure. So, no ball fields, um, typically not playgrounds. Those are provided at the county's active recreation parks. Our program is more commonly known as the Elatua County Forever Program. The mission of that program is to acquire, improve, and manage environmentally significant lands that protect water resources, wildlife habitats, and natural areas suitable for resource-based recreation. Looking at this map, the areas in red are areas that were acquired and protected through the 2016 to 2022 Wild Spaces Surtax. That's the preceding Surtax. It was a half-cent Surtax just focused on Conservation Lands and Parks. The dark green areas are the lands that were acquired in the programs prior to that, and that is from a program that began in the year 2000. So from 2000 to 2016, those are the dark green areas. The very lightest green are other conservation lands like state parks, water management district lands, so typically state-owned lands. Total acres acquired to date from 2000 to 2023 is a little over thirty-three thousand acres. In the last cycle, 2016 to 2022, there were twenty-seven properties acquired, and that totaled about thirteen thousand acres. The average total acquisition cost, so not just the per-acre land cost, but also the due diligence, the surveys, the environmental site assessments, closing costs, et cetera, is about three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars an acre. So that's total program cost for those acres that were acquired. The county works, um, it, it, within, I should say, our program works within the county using a Board of County Commissioners managed active acquisition list. So that is a list of properties that have been nominated with the agreement of a willing landowner that have been reviewed by staff and which our Citizen Advisory Board has approved to move forward as potential acquisitions, and then which the Board of County Commissioners has agreed to add to this active acquisition list. Those are the purple properties on this map. Currently, there are about forty thousand acres on that active acquisition list. Looking forward, we are utilizing a corridor-based strategy to try and get the greatest bang for our buck in protecting both water resources, but also wildlife habitat, and maintaining the focus of our program that has been in place since the year 2000. The Santa Fe River Corridor has continued to be the highest priority corridor for protection from our program, uh, since the program was created. In addition, on the east side of the county, and our focus areas are the orange that you see on this map, on the east side of the county, there's a statewide corridor that's part of the Florida Wildlife Corridor, looking to protect habitat for species in Florida that have large home ranges that need these larger connected landscapes to continue to survive, things like black bear, hamsters, and others. So that Florida Wildlife Corridor kinda hooks on the east side of the county, that's another focus for us. And then a southern corridor, hoping to connect Payne's Prairie Preserve, Bar Hammock Preserve, which is the rectangular darker-green property in the middle on the south end of the county, and Watermelon Pond Preserve, and that's where we're really getting closer to Newberry, with the hope of connecting to Gothy State Forest and then Conservation Lands that go to the Gulf. Um, that would be a much more challenging corridor and will potentially rely more heavily on the Agricultural Land Protection Program, which is being developed currently. And that will focus more on conservation easements. A conservation easement is when, um, an entity, in this case, the county, purchases what you would consider to be the development rights from the landowner, and the landowner then retains the underlying ownership of the land and the right to conduct agricultural practices that they value on their property. So a farmer could continue to farm the property, but gain the revenue from selling the development rights. And that's done, that value is calculated through an appraisal process. Um, this may provide opportunities for farmers who are struggling in the current economy to maintain the type of lifestyle and work that they want on their properties while still owning the property but gaining some revenue. In addition, the areas on the west side of the county, as I'm sure you know, are critically important for recharge of the Florida and aquifer because the soils here are so permeable. So, um, this may also provide additional benefits to water quality protection and water recharge. And we also hope that it supports local food production, which we know is going to be increasingly important as all of the state and Elatua County continues to adapt to climate changes and looks at climate resiliency strategies with more and more residents moving to the county. Again, all of these land acquisition projects and strategies are willing landowner opportunities. We never work against a landowner that's not willing to want to conserve their property. Currently, we have, we have completed some conservation easements to date. The largest one being the Hitchcock Ranch in the north, kinda northwest portion of the county. They're shown in orange on this map. Um, that one is over two thousand acres in size. The other fourteen conservation easements we have worked with landowners to establish are typically smaller. And we are looking to kind of reach out to more farming and agricultural landowners to provide opportunities to establish additional easements that meet the mission of our program, but going forward. This image is really just, in case you've never heard of the Florida Wildlife Corridor, it is part of our strategy in looking beyond the boundary of Elatua County and how we may play a role. Um, this map shows, uh, the dark green statewide are the areas within the Florida Wildlife Corridor that are already protected. The lighter green are what are called opportunity areas or areas needing protection. Um, and of course, the red circle is our portion of it in Elatua County. Summing up, um, as I said in the beginning, the Board of County Commissioners' decision for our county-level disbursement that's being assigned to the Wild Spaces and Public Places portion of the Surtax decided to assign eighty percent of the funding to the Conservation Lands effort and twenty percent of the funding to the Parks effort, which means, again, with projected totals, could be over ten years, a hundred and fifty million dollars for Conservation Lands and thirty-seven-plus million for Parks improvements. And with that, I can take any questions.
Wow, and once again, thank you ma'am. Is our board have any questions?
A lot, but.
Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Martin.
Uh, are there any data or numbers that coincide with the demand for Conservation Lands, such as people who are actually using them? Do you have trip counts or anything like that?
Uh, thank you very much for that question. Um, we do not have people counters on the county preserves that are open to public access. That is something we intend to install in the future. However, there are definitely trip counters and visitation tracking that's done on the Florida State Parks, which of course are extremely popular natural area protection and recreation system within the county and within the state. I can't quote those numbers to you currently, but, um, that state park system receives extremely heavy visitation throughout the year. Of course, that's a range of different parks in different areas of the state. Um, but we have not yet installed trip counters within the preserves.
Good, Commissioner Clark?
Is any of this conservation land here able to be hunted on?
Uh, excellent question, thank you for that, yes. So, um, currently, we do have what, what are the county calls license agreements, which are essentially contracts on, um, I think, six of our properties with individual hunting groups that, um, people have to submit an interest in through a competitive bid process and submit basically their capability to provide caretaking services, their equipment, skills, and experience in providing caretaking services to defray the management costs that the county has on some of these Conservation Lands. So we do, through that process, have hunting. We do have one site, and actually, that's in Watermelon Pond, that's part of a WEA, managed through FWC. And additionally, we are looking at establishing, potentially establishing another one at a six-thousand-acre property that we've acquired south of Hawthorne.
Is that it, Commissioner? Okay, and I'm being told that we do have the ability to adjust the range of these mics in the back, so if you don't wanna get up and lean forward, just start talking and give them a second. They'll figure out how to make it all pick up. All right, thank you ma'am, we appreciate that so much. I think next, oh, oh, we had a question down there?
I just wanted to, um, answer Commissioner's question about tracking. Our tourist development group has got an amazing facility now, uh, an app that they're using to track where people are coming into the county and where they're going. We can get you that information that we've collected through tourist development if you'd like to see. Um, it's kinda scary, really, to realize that through your phone, you can be tracked. And that's how we know people coming into the county, where they're going. Uh, it is a little alarming, but at the same time, we know where people are going when they get here, if they've got a cell phone.
Yeah. Parents call it Life 360, they can track everything.
Uh, and I would just add really quickly to that. We did do some surveys and some community engagement when we were doing our parks area, which I know Jason's gonna talk about in a bit. And, um, the number-one demand from folks in that survey was trails and outdoor recreation spaces. So, um, it was a very high-demand effort in terms of not just Conservation Lands, but also in our parks.
Yeah, we did a visioning session here in Newberry, and, and Trails and Walking Space was, I think, in our top three as well, what residents said they wanted, so. Any final questions or comments? I'll make sure I look, I assume you guys knew all this information, so y'all were just helping us understand better. All right, thank you ma'am, and I think up next is Jason Moore. Did I say that right? All right, gonna talk to us about the Parks and Open Space? Jason's colleague tonight, okay. Good evening, stand in.
My name's Ed Williams. I'm the Capital Project Coordinator for the Parks Department, uh, standing in for Jason tonight. So, um, just to give you an update on what Parks and Open Space has been up to. Can you please advance?
You have a clicker on the podium.
Oh, sorry. I'm on, that's, that's me, huh? Okay. So these are some recent improvements we made at Squirrel Ridge Park. You can see some adult fitness equipment on the left and a new playground, uh, space on the right. Chestnut Park, we've got some covered pavilions. We've made some other improvements out there as well, and then a new playground, um, at Grove Park. This is a, uh, two-unit dry hole restroom that we recently installed at Lake Altos. Precast concrete sits on top of a couple of, uh, twenty-five-hundred or three-thousand-gallon septic tanks that get pumped out, right, regular. And then we've done some resurfacing of the sports courts at Copeland Park. This is, uh, our newest pocket park at Lake Forest Elementary, where we erected a metal roof pavilion over the existing playground. We added two, two four-bay shaded swings on either side, a shade structure over the gaga pit, park benches and trash receptacles, and an accessible sidewalk to connect all these elements. We finished with the quarter-mile crushed concrete walking track, and the ribbon cutting for this was in April of this year. This is our new inclusive playground design for Veterans Memorial Park off of Tower Road. We're getting ready to put the site work portion of this project out for bids and hope to get this installed later this summer. My colleague in Conservation Lands has already covered the board-designated eighty-twenty split between them and the Parks Department, so I won't go over that again. Um, and as she stated, the ten-year funding amount for active parks is anticipated to be a little over thirty-seven million dollars. We recently finished, uh, our master planning process with a consultant. It took us just over a year, as you can see by the timeline on this slide, and it was approved by the board in February of this year. The print may be a little too small for the audience to see here, but this, uh, gives sort of some high points, the guiding principles of the master planning process to provide for today and plan for tomorrow, uh, to include proximity and access, inclusivity and safety, natural Elatua, and just better communication all around about our parks, assets, and upcoming events. This was one of the products of the master planning process, and we refer to this as our vision map. Um, the, uh, existing parks are designated by numbers on this map, and the gaps in services, um, and, and potential future park acquisitions are designated by the letters. So, the, the, uh, let me see, what did I say? The letters indicate the gaps in coverage identified by a ten-step process the consultant enumerates in the master plan. And so these are the areas where we'd be looking to acquire properties suitable for new county parks. The circles around them indicate their service areas, either neighborhood parks with a one-mile urban or two-mile rural service area, or the community parks, which are slightly larger, with a three-mile urban or six-mile rural service area. And the, uh, minimum acreage for a neighborhood park was designated as five acres and the minimum. And the minimum acreage for a neighborhood park was designated as five acres, and the minimum size of a community park is designated as twenty acres. The Wild Spaces, Public Places priorities for us and from our master plan is renovating the existing parks per the master plan priorities, and then to acquire and improve new parks in unincorporated Alachua County per the, again, the master plan priorities, including pocket parks in underserved communities, and then also partnering with other governmental agencies where appropriate to provide active park amenities. Any questions?
Does our board have any questions? Mr. Martin, was that a hand? No? Okay. Anything to add? No? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
I think next up is President Ramon Gavarete, talking to us about the Alachua County Public Works. He's the Alachua County Public Works. He's talking to us about roads. It's a hot topic out here in the city of Newberry.
Good afternoon, actually evening. It's a pleasure to be here today. Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, Chairman Commissioners. I've done this presentation now, I don't know, I lost count already, and I'm sure my Commissioners know it by memory by now, but this is just an overview of the payment management program of what the board executed on May twenty-third of this year. We had a consultant that worked with us. It started under the name of Culture Group, then they moved to Mark McDonald, and now we have actually JB Pro, so assisting us with the effort of the overall payment management system that the board purchased a few years ago. And I'll think I'll see to my right because I am a right. Commissioners, as you have been hearing, my peers here, November eighth was a very good day for Alachua County, as the voters approved the one penny sales tax or InfraSocial SRTAX that people actually refer it also. I'm going to call it the one penny sales tax in this presentation. The SRTAX will generate approximately eleven and a half to twelve million dollars a year for roadway projects. That's only for roadway projects. The balance is for everybody else. So that's just the infrastructure or penny sales tax revenues towards roadways is approximately twelve million dollars a year, and that is going to get adjusted, you know, by inflation, et cetera, et cetera, or actual revenues coming in. For 2023, it was decided that, because the board actually did set aside six million dollars for a grant program for matching grants, so for 2023, we actually only have to use four-point-two million on the county roadway system, and then every year thereafter it's going to be to twelve millions or adjusted. Having said that, there's also other type of revenues that goes into this road program that we have now. So it's not just the twelve million dollars a year from the penny sales tax coming towards the roadways. We also have...the board actually is now allocating approximately eight million dollars a year from general fund, which is property taxes. That has gone up since, I think, when I first got here, twenty-sixteen, I think we were getting about maybe a million dollars a year, and then it went up to two, then to three, and then the board...last...was it last year? Yes, last year, the board decided to allocate then eight million from property taxes also towards the road program. And then we also have a little bit left, also what's called the Elms Nickel or gas tax that is still being used. Currently, the Elms Nickel is bonded, basically, but the last payment is being done in 2027. So then you actually going to see, when you see the program, a jump, a huge jump between twenty-seventy-seven and twenty-twenty-eight for revenues, because the program actually includes a proposed bonding of the Elms Nickel for about thirty million dollars in 2028. So that is the revenues. Obviously, we adjusted for inflation, the project cost, and we also allow some growth in the revenues over the years. The Board of County Commissioners also, this is a payment management program, I have referred to that, so when you look at actually at the program, which is a total of seventeen, eleven by seventeen pages with very small print, which, by the way, anybody that wants a copy, I mean, it's actually on our website, but we can actually email if anybody wants a copy of it. The board did decide to allow for payment preservation projects, and that's why there's several types of projects, rejuvenators, all the seals, you can think of cave seals, lure seals, chip seals, you can talk about them, they're also in there. So there's some roadways that appear in the program more than once, but there's only one time that we're touching it with either a minor or a major rehab, which is the difference between an inch and a half to three or four inches of asphalt. That's the difference between a minor and a rehab. So we use Agile Assets as our payment management software. It's a very complicated software. You throw into it, into this blender, you throw all these parameters that the board decided over the last, I want to say, at least two years. And then the program then gets the payment...for example, gets the payment condition index, gets the traffic volumes, gets whether or not the road is what's called an area of inequity that I'm going to get a little bit into, and then other factors, and then also budget, funding. And then it spits out a program that will maximize, optimize the value of the program. So that's really what we use. The Board of County Commissioners, actually, we use maps developed by our Growth Management Department for areas of inequity that I'm going to get into a little bit. We are actually weighing those roadways that are in areas of inequity by an additional forty percent. So that's why a lot of these roads actually got included. Also, the board decided that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year was going to be dedicated towards residential roads in areas of inequity. And then, like I said, all that was thrown into this blender, the program spits out an output, and then it got reviewed by staff. The board also, County Commissioners, very...they knew about all these roadways, though get complaints all the time, we get emails all the time. So the Board of County Commissioners decided, okay, all those that have at least fifteen work orders or more, make sure that those get into the program too. So again, all those roads that got also thrown into this blender, into this software program, and that got put in there. So when I say fifteen work orders or more, doesn't mean that it's only one pothole. One work order can have two-hundred potholes, for example, or it could be an entire eight miles of roadways that were done in that one day. So that's the number that the board used. And then they also instructed staff to actually look at the program output, for example, especially residential roads in areas of inequity. So, for example, the Aradondo subdivision, there's a lot of roadways. Number one, I wanted to make sure that all the roadways were in the program in that subdivision, for example. And number two, we did not want to go there in 2024, for example, and touch three roads, then go back in 2026 and touch two other roads. So we're trying to capture neighborhoods as a whole one time. So we did that, and that was a lot of manual exercise when it came to the residential roads. And so seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand actually increased a little bit more when we had to add some roadways. So the overall program for residential roads in areas of inequity is actually seven-point-nine million, which is slightly more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year, when you do the math. So in areas of inequity, I'm an engineer. I don't profess to know how this works, but, you know, my boards told staff, we want to include areas of inequities in this analysis. We said, wonderful. Our consultant says, we did something similar to that in the city of Dallas. I said, great. And then I called Mr. Chris Dawson in the Growth Management Department, and he says, let me see what I can come up with. So what he can come up with was a method using the census and also some building data that you're going to see. And then we came up with our overlay of the map of areas of inequity. So the areas that we use are actually on the screen. We use the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Qualified Census Tracks, fifty percent of households with income below sixty percent. I'm not going to read it all, it's right there. We also use the Census Track with medium income of less than one-hundred-and-eighty-five over the federal poverty line. And we also then added one other item, because when we had just used the federal census track, there were a lot of areas that we knew as staff that were actually areas of inequity that were not being shown in the map. Working with Dr. Hutchins, our diversity manager, and Chris, we came up with the other method of using properties within residential improvements values in the bottom twenty percent of all values, and then we added about a quarter-mile buffer around these roads, around those houses. And then we saw the areas that we were missing appear on the map. The map is very small scale, so you're going to see here that maybe in the map, and I'm going to forward it right now, right there, that's our map. Everything that's in green is an area, if right now designated as an area of inequity. We also have the Commissioner Districts there as a guideline. So we feel very confident that the methods that were used by staff actually captured most of the areas of inequities in this county. And I say most because, you know, you're never perfect. We might have missed one small area here and there, and those are going to come out later, probably. But this is the map that we're now using for analysis. One good thing about this, Commissioners, is, and I'm proud to say that Alachua County is the first governmental entity in Florida that actually adds the inequity analysis into a payment management system. The federal government in their transportation bill that passed in twenty...well, last year, 2021, I think, or 2020, actually also requires an inequity component to be in your payment program. Nobody exactly there, everybody's still learning, so this is actually one that, one process that has been followed, and now is being actually showcased in many areas. So this is the map that we're using when it comes to areas of inequities in Alachua Unfortunately, I went to my board back in, I think it was September of 21, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around there, and I told my board back then, we need forty-five million dollars a year to be able to touch every road in this county and to be able to increase the value of our assets. You already heard that, basically, we're getting between twenty, around twenty million dollars when you add the twelve plus eight and the little change from the Elms Nickel a year, so. I'm grateful that we have additional funding, but it's still not enough to touch every road in the ten-year program that we have right now. We are hoping that the inflation cost that we added into the numbers might...will pan out eventually. Right now, inflation is still beating us on that, when it comes to that. The first project that we are under construction right now, Northeast Twenty-seventh Avenue, between the first program that my board saw prior to May twenty-third, to May twenty-third, I actually had to add almost four-hundred thousand dollars already to that program, to that one project, because we had already prices. So I'm hoping that prices level out and we can continue to do the program successfully. The good news, like I said, we are incorporating areas of inequity into a road. Our payment condition index, although it still continued to go down, when it comes to collector roads, it's going to be maintained at around fifty-three, fifty-four percent. Once you add the residential roads, the overall network comes down to about forty-nine-point-seven. Without this investment, it would have been closer to forty-one. We all know grades, so think about forty-one, fifty, fifty-five as a report card grade. I wish it was more like in the eighties or seventies, but at least we have, we are slowing down the bleeding, and Lord willing, eventually the curve is going to be going up as more funding comes available. Payment will start this summer, actually, it started this summer already, Northeast Twenty-seventh Avenue, the main line, which was approximately point nine, point nine-tenths of a mile, was...the mainland was finished in two days. The mill and resurfaced approximately an inch and a half overall, and right now they're working on completing driveways in Culver's. So any questions?
Okay. Does the board have any? I have two, but I can wait. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ramon, so with your ninja blender, right? So you put roads or your projects in the blender, and then it spits out roads according to the price, you know, and it tells you which roads to do. Now, what are the chances of a road being neglected? And what are the chances of a road being repaved or resurfaced multiple times?
I'm trying to understand your question, Commissioner. What are the chances of a road not being included in the program?
Yes, I say, okay, so you said the program that you use is like a blender.
Right.
Put all your projects in a blender, and then it spits out the roads, and you bring them in front of the board. Now, what are the probability of a road being resurfaced or a road not being surfaced at all?
Everything comes down to funding when it comes to projects. Again, those roadways that have fifteen or more work orders by that day that was decided, all those roadways made the program, because that was the instruction of the board. Now, I'm going to tell you that out of the two-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars of the program over ten years, two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars are payment management projects, one-hundred-and-seventy million of that is those roads of fifteen work orders or more. So seventy-eight percent of the payment management program is being used by those roads that have the highest complaints in the county. Now, not every road made the first year, obviously, because we have limitations in budget. Some roads did not get in until later in the program, especially after the bonding of the thirty million dollars of the Elms Nickel.
Is that a good question? Let me ask this question to our staff first before I forget it, and this may be more for Jamie, Mike, but I know that in our effort to be responsive to our residents, we go out and fill in a pothole. Well, part of their formula is how many people are calling in and complaining and getting a work order. Are we reporting when we fix...are we hurting ourselves by going out and taking care of an issue without reporting into the county?
No.
It's not new complaints? What does that mean?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, our program is strictly those roads that are county-maintained, roadways that the city's filling in pothole that our city maintains, though when those...
I'm talking about county. County roads you guys own and maintain, but sometimes we go out and we take care of an issue because it's immediate.
Well, if you are doing that, we appreciate it, but I know I get...
That's my question.
I know I get many emails and phone calls.
Should we stop doing that, or are we reporting that? Does that go into your equation? That's my question.
Again, we know that we get many emails and phone calls, some of them from Jamie. When it's our road, we get the emails.
Okay. So my question is to Jamie, are we reporting those to the county? Do they get those, that, hey, we went out and did fifteen complaints on that road?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're not reporting the complaints or issues that we address on a county road that the county maintains. However, that incident is infrequent. We do track the amount of work orders and the amount of repairs we do on the county roads that we maintain under our local agreement.
Okay.
We do track that.
Okay. My second question is, I've got a lot of questions about the county list, and you said you guys have, you can email a link. Is there a way that we can just post that, like on the Facebook, and we can share that link that goes, that takes people right to it? When I'm looking for it, I'm usually on my phone, and I've always figured that's a problem, but I'm getting a head nod.
Our communication, Mr. Mark Sexton, actually, you already have it on the county website, don't you?
Thank you, thank you. And I know that this is a fairly new program, but how fluid do you think that this list is going to be? Is this going to be...are you...you amend the list as complaints come in, as traffic studies happen? Is the list going to be a living document that is in perpetual motion? Or once you publish the list, is it set in stone and it can't react to the moment?
Okay. I'm going to answer as the Poliworks Director. I'm not answering as my Commissioners, obviously. It's up to my Commissioners to respond to, as a board. We have a program, the list has been published. Now, the program is only as good as the funding that comes in and the cost. So right now, my response to you, Mr. Mayor, is we have a program. My recommendation is always to, let's stick to the program as much as we can, as close as we can, because the minute you start moving a road, or shifting the road, or not doing a road, then you start heading in the wrong direction when it comes to the program.
Hang on a second. I don't think that's quite my question. My question isn't sticking to the program. My question is about the program. How fluid is the program? So let's say you had a huge development that was coming in, and you'd had a traffic study and said, okay, when we put in the numbers, we didn't have fifteen-hundred homes here. Does the program get updated and it's fluid like that? I'm asking about the program, not sticking to the program.
One funding source that is not in this program is what we use as impact fees and MMTMs, multi-modal transportation mitigation fees. That is not included in this program. So if it's a new development and it's capacity program, that's in another section of the program.
Okay. I mean, I keep hearing that it's not new roads, and I get that, but I guess my question is... my question isn't necessarily about new roads, right? It's about an already existing road. If something drastic changes on that road, does the program have the fluidity?
What I, what I understood, and my colleagues can correct me, is that when we adopted the 10-year list, we were adopting the roads that we were gonna do in the next 10 years. So, obviously, we can't commit future commissions, so if a future commission goes, decides they're gonna change the list, we can't stop them from doing that. But I think this commission was committed to the list that we voted on, and that those would be the roads that we were gonna do. And that's why we tried so hard to get the actual criteria right that went into the blender, so that we made sure that we got the majority of the roads that were major complaints, that were our collector roads, that were in areas that had been under addressed in the past, so that we would get the biggest bang for our buck, given the limited resources that we had. I don't know if any of my colleagues, Commissioner Cornell?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor, and they will adjust the mic if I just keep talking.
Just keep talking, and they will.
They will adjust the mic, okay, sounds good. So, first of all, I'm very thankful for the fact that we were here a year ago, and we were asking for support for the infrastructure sales tax, and many of the folks in the audience supported that. And I just, first of all, I want to thank you for that. I see Fisher Pinkerson out, out, out there, he was elected in 2002. Lee and I worked on a similar initiative in 2010. That's actually how I met Lee, and that failed miserably, but this one actually passed last year, and as a result, Lee, I think when you were on the commission, we were putting two or three million of general fund in. We've got that up to eight million. Now that this has passed, we've got that, another 12, up to 20 million. When the Elms Nickel expires in five years, I'm hopeful this board or the next board will allocate that, that would make it 28 million. So, this board has moved a long way from really zero, plus, and this is excluding the gas act, we also have the gas act, to now 20 to hopefully 28 million a year, 10 years, a quarter of a billion dollars, a lot of projects. Everybody keeps talking about a blender. This has been a two-year process. It's not a blender, it's actually a two-year process of this man and his staff actually inventorying every road mile to put into that system, looking at trip counts, looking at road condition, and then coming up with the best and most efficient way to utilize a quarter of a billion dollars for the most citizens of Alachua County. That's, that's really the short answer. As additional impacts come, I hope those impacts are paid for by the developer and the people that are impacting those roads. We have 1,200, 1,400 people moving a day to this state, and hopefully, they will pay their fair share instead of all of you that are current taxpayers. That's one thing that's great about the infrastructure sales tax, is 30 to 35% of it is paid for by people that don't pay anything in Alachua County, but not for this sales tax, they are using the infrastructure and not paying for it. So, we're really pleased about that, I'm pleased with this presentation. My real, but I have a question for my colleagues. We allocated 70% of that extra half cent to roads, 30% to housing, we're not talking about housing tonight. I know some of you may or may not have supported this, but my question to y'all is, how are y'all spending the penny for the infrastructure sales tax for the city of Newberry? I'm really curious, I want to hear if you've had that discussion and what you've concluded and come up with.
And we actually have a presentation that will cover that later on tonight.
Okay, absolutely. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your question, thank you.
Absolutely, and I think, Mr. Jones, you joined, amend your previous, you had to add.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, you know, a question for Ramon. Are the county roads that the city's maintaining under the interlocal in your pavement management system, and are the city roads that the county's maintaining by interlocal in the pavement management system?
Jamie, the echo here is very bad, I can hardly understand. What I'm gathering is, are my, are all the county roads in the system? Yes or no? The answer is yes, those are county maintained, are in our system.
What I'm asking is, is county-owned roads that are maintained by the city of Newberry under the interlocal agreement, are they in the pavement management system? And are the city-owned roads that are maintained by the county in the pavement management system?
All those roads that are maintained by the county, regardless of ownership, are in the program.
Okay, what about the? So, no, so if we have a county road that we're maintaining through interlocal agreement, that's not in your program?
Correct.
Okay, can we, can we address that? Because if your, if your program is...
I also, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but this is actually only those, only the, the roads that are in this program are those that are paved, not chip-sealed.
I'm talking about paved, I'm talking about paved.
And a lot of the roadways that the city's maintaining for the county are chip-sealed roadways.
So, can we address that? If we maintain your road, can we get that, those figures into your program? Is that possible?
If we can address the ones that are in, that y'all are paying for in your infrastructure sales tax, I think we could.
Okay, so that's, that's something that we can talk about later on, okay. All right. Any further questions? Commissioner Clark?
So, the roads are near and dear to my heart here, because everything we hear in this county from our constituent is roads, roads, roads. 235 is a major corridor for this city, a major corridor for major companies that come in and out of this county. 241, 337 are big roads. Here's what I ask, because of your system, I don't know that those, is 235, can you give me a projection date when 235 will be maintained, resealed, re, totally repaid?
We have those files, and I can, again, there, those are available and published.
So, that's, that's what I'd like to know, and, and the reason this is, because to Commissioner Cornell's point, we will show where every dime we have or we can spend our roads, and we're actually wanting to do that, that's what our, one of our things is. But what I would like to know also is, 15th Avenue, although it's a chip-sealed road, there is absolutely 100,000 patches on it. And if anybody in the board, or Mr. Ramon, if you would like to meet me out there, I'd love to ride it with you, just to show you how bad 15th Avenue is as a corridor out of this town. So, to try to say that we got this management system, it looked like the green map on the inequity side is all on the east side of town, and on this side, we don't get nothing. So, that's my, I'm not, I would just like to know, I would just like to know, Mr. Ramon, seriously, would you ride and see it, or have you ridden after the storm and seen the four-foot potholes that we deal with out here, that this crew cold patches and, and maintains? That's just a question. I'd love to have any of you. I invite you, I think, we talked one time, and we, we didn't get together, but I just invite you to see after a rain what we deal with. That's all I'm asking.
It's a standing invitation. Mr. New, you had, you wanted to add to the conversation?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out, Southwest 15th Avenue is a county-owned right-of-way, it's a city-maintained street through an interlocal agreement, and the county chip-silled it at the city's request, been probably 15 years ago. But, as Ramon was explaining, this program and the county commission was commenting on it, there is a grant opportunity, a partnership opportunity, that our county commission may consider proposing 15th as a match fund. We take some of our one-cent surtax funds and match it with the counties to see if we can't get Southwest 15th improved to a true road standard, something not chip-sealed. And I think to, to the, the point of Southwest 15th Avenue being chip-sealed, it's probably the oldest chip-sealed road in our city limits, and when you hear both our staff and county staff saying, "We do not recommend chip-sealed, because it gives people a false impression of permanency," Southwest 15th Avenue is the best example I can think of. It has not come close to performing as a paved road would, it's much closer to performing as a graded unpaved road would.
I think that's a great idea, and I hope that everybody leaves here tonight with improved and renewed energy to continue all the great partnerships that we've had in the past. I think we're gonna talk about a potential partnership here tonight as well. So, I think that's how we actually get things done, is we figure out how we can help each other. Commissioner Maison? No, Commissioner Martin, sorry.
I'm trying to find it on the website, and I don't know where it is, can, do you have a?
He's gonna post the link for us again, to the list.
I kinda wanted to look at it real time, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Can you, can we post that up on the?
I even went into the search bar and hit pavement, and it doesn't come up.
I've always struggled finding it on my phone. I don't have a computer, I don't know. We don't have that capability to do it, no. Maybe by the end of the night, we can, we can look it up.
Mark, can you tell us what the website is where it's posted?
Maybe in the back.
Can, can we come back to that, Commissioner? I, I know I have a lot of questions about the list, and I've, I've talked to all of you about all the different lists that have existed over the course of the years, and I guess that's kind of the question when it comes to the list. That's where I'm trying to get at, is this a living list that kind of lives and breathes, or is it static? Because I think we've heard in the past that lists were static, and then they weren't, right? So, and we get that they're, they're dependent on elections and boards and things turnover, and those things happen, but that's why I like what we're gonna be talking about tonight, a straight interlocal partnership where everybody's got some skin in the game and you can, you can lay some things out. So, if we, if we don't have any other questions about the roads, Commissioner Coleman?
Mine's not a question. I've been here a long time, and you're using complaints to be the ones to get higher on the list. Somewhere in there, the formula needs to be, how many deaths on 337, how many deaths on 235? Because we've had a pile of them, a lot of young, of our young people have passed away on those two roads.
Hey, I agree with that comment, by the way. Yeah, safety.
Question to that, if my question was gonna be, when was the last time 337 was renovated?
Commissioner Mason, like, like I told before, and I told this, said, are the average age in Alachua County, the road system, is anywhere between 30 to 40 years?
Are you saying that 337 was renovated within the last 30 years?
No, I'm not saying the average age. I'm not gonna, I cannot tell you exactly when 337 was done, but it was definitely before the standards were adopted.
Good, down here? Other comments on this side?
I just have a quick comment to say. We, we asked Ramon to look at the inequities in the, in the community, because there were a lot of communities that were being overlooked. They're paying their taxes, just like everybody, Cop, the Copeland area is one, but Commissioner Chestnut and I had been advocating for a while. It's a, it's a mile, it's only a mile, but it is going through a community that has not been served, maybe ever. And there are trucks that come through there, just like the trucks that you all are seeing there. So, this is why we were trying to add that in, and of course, it was quite an effort to take on roads like this that may, or you may not even know about. You all may not even know about that road that goes through the Copeland community there, but we're real proud, I'm real proud, Commissioner Chestnut is real proud, that Ramon has taken that on, it's one of the first. Now, I'm, I'm a big advocate for 235 and 235A, they're on that list, they're on that list, guys. And, and it's because there are those of us, you know, that you all have talked to, who've complained enough about those roads that we know that they're important. There are also roads that the trucks are using right now, that we're trying to figure out ways with DOT to get truck routes around Alachua. Alachua's got a whole lot of those trucks that are coming through the areas too, and what we are looking at anticipating on 337 South is another, is, is another thing that we are having to look at too, in terms of, of the collection center there. I mean, so, you know, I think in terms of being fluid, I mean, we have sinkholes that come up in these roads all the time, that would be an issue for fluidity, you know, so. I, I, Ramon is a professional, he's known throughout the state for his professionalism and his expertise, and we trust his judgment, and we pushed him in ways that he doesn't want to be pushed in a lot of, a lot of times, but he does it. You know, that whole time when, when Ramon said that they needed, he needed 40,000, 40 million dollars to fix the roads, I said, well, let's just bond it. And he said, no, no, you don't understand, that's 40 million a year for 10 years. So, you know, we are, we are doing the best we can to give him what he needs to take care of these roads, because we know, we travel those roads with you all, and, and, and I am sorry that I haven't gotten to the roads over here that you all, but I, I used to travel 337 South pretty regularly when I taught in Bronson, lived in Bronson and Chiflin, would run that road. So, and I know that the road up to the Leedy County line is beautiful, coming from the other side. I, I understand, I've seen it. So, but, you know, we, we've asked Ramon to take this little pot of money and do the best he can with it. We were trying to address some of the communities that had not been addressed, so that we could prove to those communities that they had not misplaced their trust in us when we asked for that extra half cent. And that extra half cent, we want them, one of the reasons that we've done the, the underserved areas, is to make sure that they knew that their money was being spent the way we told them it would be spent. Thank you, and I'm gonna go from here.
And if I could just add to that, just for clarity's sake, the map is very small up there. I have a copy in front of Mayor Marlowe, I can pass it down, but areas in and around Newberry, Archer, Alachua, and High Springs are in fact included in those inequity areas, because there are a lot of high-value properties out in the Jonesville area and sort of the areas around here, we have a lot of very affluent areas in this area, so those are much patchier than they are in the eastern portion of the county, where we have a lot more poverty. But I think when you look at the map closely, you will actually see that there are areas across the entire county that are included in our inequity areas. And that was really just a small part of our overall criteria. I mean, there was a lot of criteria that went into it, and I guess my question for you, Ramon, is, how was safety incorporated into the pavement management system equation along with the other?
Safe, Madam Chair, safety is one of those items that is directly related to the condition of the payment, of the payment also. So, that's how it was included. Doing an in-depth analysis of all the crashes in the entire 700 miles of, centerline miles that rural county maintains, that was just not feasible to do. So, but basically, if your road conditions are terrible, your safety index is also very low. So, that's the correlation, and that's how that got included. Now, over the years, we have done analysis of crashes in specific roadways, including 337, and I do have those statistics for anybody that wants them, but we did not include crashes in everything into the system.
Okay, I, I want to say first that I applaud the effort for the inequity areas, because under the old methodology, it was trip counts, and the rural communities would never compete with Gainesville, right? So, which is why, I, I think Ken has already left, but he told me the last time 337 got addressed, and it was when he was in high school, and he graduated in 1975, so it was sometime in that timeframe. So, I appreciate trying to come at this with a little bit of out-of-the-box thinking, and I'm just still hopeful that when you have willing financial partners who are willing to put skin in the game, that will also change the dynamic a little bit as well. So, do we have any other? I saw a computer come up, did we get 235? Do we know where that is on list? We're still looking for 235? That's not good, that means it's so far down on 17 pages that we, we can't find it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, as a point of reference, the county provided us with their table list Gina sent us three or four weeks ago. It's on there, it, it's about 20 pages, fine print, it looks like this, but we can find it, and we'll advise it.
Okay, Commissioner Martin had just asked for us to be able to announce that before we all leave here tonight, so.
I only have one page out of 12.
I think we got two people over here working on it, so.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna get it up on Facebook. What we have on Facebook are very generic posts about the amount of money that's going into the program. We don't have this specific fine document on there, but we're gonna find it, we're gonna put it up momentarily.
Okay, well, this commission passed a resolution a couple of years ago of the top three county roads within the city of Newberry that we think need to be addressed, 337, 235, 232, was that the third one on there? And at the League of Cities, we asked every city to do the same thing, you know, to help identify what are the roads that each of us own that are, we're trying to get addressed. I don't know the status of those other cities, would they've done that? I don't know the status of those other cities, would they've done that or not? But maybe that Facebook post could be municipality dependent and you can say, okay, three thirty-seven is this date, two thirty-five is that date. That way it would be easy for us to share, or you can just email it to me and I'd be happy to do that as well. Okay, any more questions, comments, statements for Ramon? Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. And we're gonna move to uh, City of Newberry Project's update. I believe the first presenter is gonna be Dallas Lee, implementation of impact fees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Really good segue from our previous conversation into where the city of Newberry is in adopting our own impact fees. Impact fees, I'm sure the commission is aware, but for our residents are a one-time fee charged to new construction within the community to offset the cost of that construction, that new impact of growth. So that our existing residents don't have to pay for that growth with their taxes. As the county commissioner, city commissioner are aware, property taxes generally don't fund expansion or capacity increases, but only ongoing maintenance. So we've been looking at impact fees for about two years now. In our budget process in two thousand and twenty-one, the city commission provided direction to city staff and funding to hire a consultant for us to begin the impact fee process.
Can we get that volume turned up just a little bit on, on Dallas and Mike? And Dallas, can you just lean in a little bit? It's not meant for six foot four people.
Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, oh gosh. In two thousand and twenty-two, we completed our impact fee um, study. We held a number of, of workshops with the community and the commission for input. We also adopted our five-year strategic plan in two thousand and twenty-two. And we received the final report of our impact fee study in December of last year. Beginning of this year, we had our first reading of the ordinance. We had some robust conversation between the commission and the community. And we are prepared for second reading at our next meeting, uh, July twenty-fourth, with implementation following shortly thereafter. I mentioned earlier that last year, the city adopted its strategic plan. Adoption of impact fees meets nine of our strategic goals, primarily around infrastructure and funding of infrastructure and providing our residents um, a livable community. Our commission decided to look at two different impact fee types, impact fees for building, uh, public buildings and for multimodal transportation. The public buildings funds will be used for new government buildings, fire stations, additions to existing buildings, and equipment needed for additions to existing buildings or new buildings. The multimodal is obviously for new roads, expansion of cap, capacity of existing roads, sidewalks, bike, bicycle paths and other transportation projects. On the slide before you now is the one hundred percent fee calculation. Our commission has given staff direction that they do not intend to adopt the impact fees at one hundred percent in the first year, but would prefer to step into those impact fees. So we are drafting an ordinance that will step those impact fees in. But for example, for residential, for public buildings, it's about a thousand dollars at a hundred percent. And then in our multimodal transportation fee, the one hundred percent is about fifty-six hundred dollars for the average single-family home. So our next steps for impact fees, as I mentioned, we have our second uh, reading and adoption of the, of the ordinance at our next commission meeting on July twenty-fourth. We will also be presenting an economic development impact fee incentive program at that meeting for the commission's decision. If they would like to incentivize economic development by waiving impact fees. And then should it be adopted, we'll start collecting impact fees at the beginning of next fiscal year.
Commissioner.
I'm glad to see that the city is looking at impact fees, cause like we just talked about, as people come into this community, hopefully they should pay for their impacts. Otherwise, we all pay for their impacts. But I really would like, before we move on, I flip through it, I didn't see, what is the city using the one cent infrastructure for? I haven't seen that.
That's, I think that's next. It's a different presentation, he's on, he's on impact fees. When we get to Mike, Fifteenth Avenue Road Construction and City Hall, I think that's when he'll talk about the infrastructure tax and the percentage breakdown. I think Dallas can actually probably, if you, if you just really wanna jump ahead, I think we can probably get there. Go, no, go ahead, Dallas.
Mr. Mayor, currently, um, we have not, um, the commission has not allocated the full funding. However, uh, a large portion of it is going to a road project, Southwest Fifteenth, which the city manager will cover in a moment. And then we're using another large portion of it for the infrastructure requirements of the Newberry Environmental Park, uh, which the commission will be discussing later. The remainder of it is going to um, supplement our gas tax funding for road projects within the city.
Yeah, I didn't wanna give you a percentage, because we don't, we don't generally operate that way and say we want eighty, twenty. We say, what's our best use of plugging in the dollars where they make sense? But the policy direction up here is that the bulk of it's gonna go to roads. But we do have a couple of other infrastructure projects that are gonna claim a piece of it, but the bulk is roads. All right, back to impact fees.
I, I do have a question on impact fees. Um, we were recently doing um, some impact fee studies for ourselves in order to update some of our impact fees. I, we, our presentation is cut off and that's very far away, so I couldn't tell what your impact fees are. Are you charging just for residential, are you doing a fire impact fee or park impact fees? Like what impact fees are you doing, or just road impact fees?
Um, we're, the commission is considering two separate impact fees. One's multimodal for roads and transportation. The other is a public government buildings impact fee, uh, which we can use for um, city hall, new fire stations, new park facilities. Those are the two impact fees we're considering.
Gotcha, okay. All right, well, we just did a, a bunch of work looking at impact fees and doing the study necessary to sort of update our impact fees. So I'll say, one, you could take a look at them, and if you decide to look at other impact fees, you can always adopt the ones that we're working towards. But also, um, I, I would, one of the things that we didn't do was update ours regularly. And as a result, some of them are very out of date, and now they're so far out of date that we can't even increase them the way that we need to increase them. So I would encourage y'all to put together a process for updating yours on the regular so that you don't end up in the same bucket that we were in recently.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have been uh, following your process and we've been in contact with Chris Dawson, who's been looking at our process as well.
And we, we actually discussed that mistake, cause we thought, well, the numbers don't make sense. And we were informed that you guys are updating it been quite some time. Commissioner Wheeler, did you have something down there?
I just was gonna say, great, well done. You know, we, when we heard that you all were doing this over here, everybody was real excited, you know, that, that, that this was happening here. So, good job.
We're, we're excited to base it on that same principle. We want, we welcome, we take it as a compliment when people join our community and move in uh, to us. But we don't want the folks who've lived here forever to have to pay for the impacts that those new residents create. And city hall is fine for a city of Newberry, that's four thousand, uh, city of Newberry that's eight thousand, we're a little cramped, you know?
I, I would add to that, we're looking at people who are moving into the area here too, that are coming from the northeastern, from the south, who are selling their homes at exorbitant prices and come here with money to spend here. So we, you know, we need to make sure that, that they are, they're getting what they're paying for in terms of infrastructure. But at the same time, that we're not having to pay for the extravagance that they're bringing here as well.
Agreed. Any other questions, comments, Commissioner Martin?
County commissioner doesn't have to know, or doesn't have to worry about where the city of Newberry's money goes, we're not Gainesville. We know where everything is.
We do believe in roads, we put it into roads. Okay, other questions or comments? Thank you, Dallas, I think next up is Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a brief update on the urban services boundary amendments that this evening Berry is undertaking. Just as a, a brief refresher for anybody in the audience or listening who's not uh, aware of what an urban service area boundary is. It's a tool that was authorized by the state legislature to help communities basically manage their growth by limiting it to specific geographic areas and providing a hard boundary for municipal utility service provision. It helps with plan, planning your urban growth, preservation of the rural areas. If you wanna establish, like the city of Newberry has, a green belt around the urbanized area. This is a tool that can help make sure that happens. More efficient service delivery by ensuring that the service delivery is primarily within the area. Better, uh, more efficient resource allocation, utilization and allocation. And then of course, enhanced livability because the services are concentrated in the urban area and makes it easier for people to access those services in a convenient manner. Quick recap on the timeline, in February of two thousand and twenty-two, the commission uh, held several public workshops on the creation, the existing urban service boundary and then any changes that the community would be interested in seeing and the commission would be interested in seeing. Basically, everybody got out on the tables, they drew their lines around the map deciding, you know, where they'd like to see the urban services boundary. Some were expansions, some were contractions. Ultimately, um, we came up with a series of five potential amendments to the, to the urban services area. Commission then directed staff uh, which amendments to make. And then on our previous meeting, June twenty-sixth, the commission directed staff to further refine the uh, urban service area proposal. And that is what we have that passed on first reading on the twenty-sixth with those adjustments. So this is a picture of the existing urban service area. Kind of the crazy outline is the city of Newberry's municipal boundary. The circle you see there, mostly a circle, is essentially a three-mile radius around the centroid of the city of Newberry. That's the current urban services boundary. Commission, it, it left some gray areas in terms of if a property is by, on the perimeter is bisected by the, the radius. Was it in, was it out? Commission wanted more clarification on that and more clarity. And so the proposed uh, urban services boundary adjustment would then square that off and basically um, bring the corners on the, on the east side of the urban services area out into more of a square formation. And so this is the amended urban service area boundary that was approved on first reading by the city commission. And now that we just received the uh, map updates from our GIS consultant, that'll be going to the State Department of Economic Opportunity Review this week. And that's the end of the presentation.
Yes, I appreciate the update too, I know we talked about this at our last meeting and I really appreciate seeing the progress. Can you share with me what the urban services are that will be provided inside the boundary versus outside of the boundary? I mean, typically, urban services boundaries are outside municipalities and inside municipalities, it's interesting. It's, I, I think it's a really cool idea that a city wants to protect, you know, the character of their community in a different way. But I'm just interested, is it gonna be a zoning? Will you have zoning differences? Or will it just be services?
Madam Chair, the primary, the primary difference is going to be outside, the city is committed not to extend water and sewer outside of the urban services area. That's going to limit the density of, of development that can occur outside to the um, essentially one residential unit per five acres, similar to the county's limitation. The only dense, large-scale developments allowed would be within that urban services area where you have water and sewer provision. It's not really gonna affect the zoning so much because we don't zone anything that requires water and sewer services. We won't rezone if they're not available or closely available, you know, within a reasonable reach. And so um, right now, the only commercial categories we have that are allowable outside the urban services area would be like a commercial neighborhood, which is a little small-scale uh, development for the, the local area.
So outside the urban services, it will still be the kind of one to five acre sort of rural con, kind of zoning? Yeah, that's one, yeah. And can I, I guess, one question I would ask, I guess maybe it's more of a comment to the commission. One thing that um, we've, we've, we, I think we've experienced over time is that, that one per five, when it's spread over, you know, a large area can be, end up being just a bunch of sprawling ranchettes. So you don't get the impact that you wanted in terms of being able to create the rural character. So clustering or, or having zoning that requires clustering, um, or policies that require clustering of that density can also be really helpful in terms of achieving what I think you all are trying to achieve, and I'm really excited to see. And that is protecting our farmland and the rural character of our community. So thank you all for the work.
And we actually have a, a zoning package that is planned rural residential development. We, we do offer that to, to try to encourage that. This update also comes with an ask. You, you guys have an urban services boundary as well, and we would ask you guys to hold that line. So when we did our visioning process, what we heard from our residents is that they don't want Gainesville to overtake Newberry. When you leave Gainesville, you want to drive through some rural agricultural area to get to Newberry, to know that you've left one community, you've gone to another one. When I was a kid, Gainesville didn't start till I-75, uh, and Jonesville was a gas station, I think Commissioner Farnsworth owned it. And Rosie's Bar was there. And now, you know, there's a city that has popped up between Newberry and Gainesville that most folks believe they live in the city of Newberry, uh, because they have a three-two-six-six-nine zip code, their address says Newberry. But that your urban service area, your boundary line exists right west of Gainesville. And so you can kind of directly see it when it comes to that big dense development. We wanna protect that green space. When you look at our, our map there, the kind of the idea is we are, are signaling to developers, we can work with you to develop inside, we're not gonna work with you to develop outside. We want that farmland, we want that green space, we want that boundary around us. But we're gonna need help, because if you guys move yours, right, uh, then it, it disappears that way. So we need a partnership there also. Any other comments or questions on the USA? All right, thank you, Brian. And next one is also near and dear to my heart, three cities in your county have been working together to create a regional wastewater facility to reduce the carbon footprint, better for the environment, better for the customer. Jamie, take it away.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As the mayor stated, we wanted to give you a brief update on where we were with the advanced wastewater treatment project. As you're probably aware, but the audience may not be, the city of Newberry is a part of what they call the Santa Fe Basin Management Action Plan area. And due to that fact, we're under an administrative order, basically a permit condition, that we upgrade our existing wastewater treatment plant from the basic treatment that we have now to advanced treatment by March of two thousand and twenty-six. So this change in treatment process would allow the treated wastewater that the facility eventually discharges to the environment to have the nitrogen level reduced below three milligrams per liter. And to accomplish this, a plant upgrade, the city with the help of FDPE and the state revolving fund program, we purchased ninety-six acres that were adjacent to the existing wastewater plant. With forty-one of those acres purchased specifically with SRF funding that is exclusively designated for expansion of the wastewater treatment plant and affluent disposal. The balance of that property was purchased with city funds, and that's the location for the Newberry Environmental Park that the city's working on. It's anticipated that the current wastewater treatment plant would primarily be for affluent disposal of that parcel. And as you can see from this depiction, I know it's kind of hard to see, but where the new advanced facility would be, the footprint would be. And the red line bounds the forty-one acres that was purchased by the state revolving fund. This facility would potentially be regional in nature. The city of Archer and the city of High Springs has expressed interest in conveying wastewater to us for, for treatment and ultimately the disposal of the same. We are currently working through our engineering design. We've completed, as I said, the land acquisition and the planning document is required for state funding. And uh, this project is slated for construction to start in two thousand and twenty-four. To date, the city has secured more than seventeen million dollars in grant funding for this project. And we're actively pursuing all grant funding opportunities, as well as yard sales, bake sales, raffles and everything else. We can do that, this is a, a, a little more pulled-in view of the actual footprint of the facility and uh, explains the actual components. But the, the key takeaway, right now, you know, our discharge is somewhere in the neighborhood of ten milligrams per liter nitrogen. This mandates that it goes below. mandates that it goes below three milligrams per liter at end of pipe. With that, I'm open to any questions?
That's succinct.
Commissioner?
So tell me again, the DEP agreement requires the plant by what date?
By March of 2026. Any facility that is within a basin management action plan area, when they go to upgrade their operating permit, they now have to meet the discharge limits at that action plan. So every city, you know, example of Lottsworth, I think their permit renews in a year, year and a half. When they go to renew their facility permit, they will come under the same order to, to meet the discharge limits.
And what's the total cost of the plant?
Right now, the, it's in active design. We're estimating the cost to be approximately $40 million.
And so we've got 17?
We got 17 million in grant funding.
And the other 23?
Would come from matching funds or we would have to bond the, the project. And as I said, we're still currently seeking grant funding. We have folks actively working on that.
When would you start construction, once you receive the bonding?
We need to be under construction by the last quarter of 2024 to ensure that we can meet the March 26 completion date.
So has Archer and/or High Springs committed any money to this budget?
I believe that, that interlocal is coming up in front of both of their boards within the next month. We had to wait until we got a certain percentage of ways through the design to figure out what each city needed.
We currently, Mr. Mayor, have a draft interlocal agreement. One of the last elements is narrowing down and nailing down the cost per gallon and ensuring exactly what the city of Archer needs in gallons per day, or the city of High Springs needs in gallons per day. And any capacity that, that they would need constructed for their use, they would be paying that construction cost per gallon of capacity.
Okay, so this is 41 of the 96 purchased acres?
There's 41 of the 96 acres that have SRF covenants that restricted the wastewater treatment plant operation or effluent disposal. As you can see, the, the red lined area, let me back up, that borders the existing wastewater plant. That is what has SRF covenants. All that south of that, that borders 337, was purchased with city funds. Now, we are doing geotech and design, and we have the ability to shift components around. The geotech work will determine what pieces of the property, whether they're SRF or not, are the most applicable to use for effluent disposal. And where the lime rock is, is deeper than six foot from surface and such as that. So as that design moves forward, we will refine what can go where.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Where's your effluent going to go? I, I know you're doing advanced treatment, which means you're lowering the nitrogen levels of the effluent, but where's the, where's your effluent going?
Currently, Mr. Mayor, the effluent disposal is a spray field on the existing wastewater treatment plant project. What we are contemplating is a combination of spray field, rapid infiltration basins, and a small teaching constructive wetlands project.
Okay. That's a lot of, that's a lot of potentially useful water. Are you planning on growing hay with the?
We currently do harvest that effluent spray field for hay and a biosolids application site. One of the things about this project, we are looking to sponsor and, and locate a composting facility adjacent to this facility. That way we will not be land applying biosolids. They will be de-watered and conveyed to that composting facility.
Thank you. I live in the city of Archer. I know the city of Archer is very, very excited about this facility coming in and Archer finally getting sewer. So everyone I talk to mentions it. So I know they're ready to support however they can.
Well, and I'm really excited about this too. I think when we have the interlocals in place, going after the rest of that funding, Tallahassee is very excited about this project. They realize that the standards that they have created are going to put a, a burden on towns the size of Newbury, High Springs, Archer, that are going to be really difficult to meet. So again, thinking outside the box, one way that we want to try to address that is by banding together. We can do more together than we can alone, and we luckily, geographically, it's possible. So.
Springs is excited too. The, the Archer is expecting a great deal of growth now with this coming into. They're really excited about having families moving into that community. At one point, were you all considering including Trenton in this?
There were some discussions with the city of Trenton about conveying wastewater to us. Unfortunately, they have options to the west that are a little easier to construct to and a shorter route. But that being said, they are very interested in bringing biosolids to the composting facility because that will save them a tremendous amount in disposal cost.
Well, it's, it's an ambitious project and I'm, I'm excited and proud for, for Newbury coming up with this. All of you guys, I really do appreciate the way you're looking forward and taking these big projects on. I had another question and it went out of my head. That's why I'm stalling right now and just, you know, telling you how wonderful you are. But I'll think of it again in a minute.
Just keep on telling us how wonderful you are. That's fine. We did work with Trenton for a long time, but they basically ended up taking our idea and going to someone who's a little bit closer. But all the power to, I mean, there's still a lot of love between the communities.
A lot of you guys think we just focus on what's in Gainesville, but this board is not like that. This is a different board than what you all are used to. So we're watching what's going on and celebrating what's happening in the outlying areas.
That's a great quote. Where did TB20 go?
I just want to say that.
That's perfect. Yeah.
But I'll, I'll think of it in a minute and then I'll holler at y'all. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions, comments for Jamie on this? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mike, you're going to take on 15th Avenue Road Reconstruction?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm putting on my project manager cap. We, we got an ambitious commission. They have lots of projects. And so, so sometimes, some of us are part timing in other roles than our typical roles. So Southwest 15th Avenue, let me get up there, is a project, as the commission has already indicated, and I can tell you, you know, from 26 meetings a year, their priority is infrastructure. So when the opportunity for the half cent sales surtax being funded to infrastructure was presented, the commission prioritized a roadsless project and Southwest 15th Avenue topped the list. Also last, last spring, we were going through a visioning exercise and, and you can see that goal A is infrastructure. Again, there are a lot of sub As that, that deal with our water and wastewater utility, but transportation was, was very close to the top of the list. And, and so Southwest 15th Avenue became a priority project for our commission and our community. And I'd say that one thing that's kind of unique about Southwest 15th Avenue is, is the transportation projects that the city has taken under during my time here have mostly been, we have a local two lane street in a neighborhood and we reconstructed or resurfaced it, but it is essentially the same street when we're through as when we began. It's just in a lot nicer condition. And we, we may add street lighting, we may add sidewalks and improve the swells, but it, it doesn't really have a different look and feel when it's done. I would say Southwest 15th Avenue is, is different. This is a road that was initially, it was a county road. It was one of those rural county line roads that if you go back and look at county code says, we're going to establish road right of way on every section line. And that's where Southwest 15th came from. And it was originally a county road before the city had annexed all the way, one mile away from, from its downtown corridor. So, and then it became part of Newbury and it also became the hub for three of the local schools. All three local schools were built either on 15th Avenue or proximate, so proximate to 15th Avenue that their morning and afternoon traffic rush negatively impacted. So here's what was a two lane local street that just wasn't constructed to handle the school loading, the traffic associated with schools. And our community and our commission recognized it and they've asked us to design improvements and then fund construction. So we have-
Mike, before you move on, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear what, what our city manager is discussing is West 15th from 27 to 337, not East 15. I know we had talked earlier during our roads conversation about a potential partnership for East Southwest, is it still Southwest? East 15th Avenue. What Mike is presenting on is from 27 to 337. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear about, because I know we got a lot of residents that really want that road to be fixed as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a very important distinction. So we've completed the planning phase within the last year of what the commission wants the roadway to become and look like. And we were currently underway with design. One of the features that we're really working hard to incorporate in, that, that this road was initially constructed with no, the stormwater retention, had open swells, and there was no street parking. There's very few houses that face it. And so very little street parking. And then we constructed three schools adjacent to them. And I don't know if you guys are paying attention to the schools, but I've rarely seen a school that build enough parking. They build enough for staff, what's going to be there during the day, but they do not build enough parking for moms and dads that are walking their children to get onto the school campus. So we had a real parking deficiency and a stormwater deficiency in that area. We are, I'd say in the tail end of design, we're about 75% design. We are working with the school board to get land that we need for stormwater retention. And, and hopefully the carrot to entice them to do that is that we are creating and funding a lot of parking that currently doesn't exist at these schools. Can't imagine any other use for all the parking that's going to be put in on these streets because again, there are no houses in proximity to this. And so far, the school board staff has been very open to that conversation. So hopefully we will finish the design within the next 60 days and be ready to go to construction. Estimated cost for the roadway project is $1 million. And, and it is the first project that we, our commission has directed for us to fund with the half cent, half cent infrastructure sales tax. So this is kind of the section that we're talking about. Those are the three schools that we mentioned. And here's the roadway segment. The eastern end of the road, starting about where it says Newbury Elementary School, the very left side of that, exists today as a two lane road. The western piece that you can see that is underneath Newbury High School is, well, there's the, the western piece. That dash line is just going to be a new road extension. So this is kind of a combination of a reconstruction of existing street plus the extension of the existing street. The community feels that, that extension will take a lot of traffic loading off through our downtown area, both morning and after school. Folks that are coming down 337 that live west and south of town now drive all the way up into town, take a right, and then all the way back down through town to get back down to Southwest 15th Avenue. So that western sec, segment is about one third the total length. It's about a 4,800 foot long air, piece of roadway segments are just short of a mile. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation on Southwest 15th Avenue reconstruction and extension.
Okay, thank you. You guys got any questions?
I just have a quick comment. I mean, I could point at the map where I used to live 40 years ago and 50 needed something back then. So my kids walk this.
You'll send us GIS coordinates. We'll make sure we do something real special right there.
Yeah. So I can picture the entire length of it. So it's, it's-
Thank you. We're excited. It's going to be a real meaningful project for our community.
Thank you, Mike. Any other question, Wheeler?
You know, we, we talked about sharing projects with, with our municipalities. Have you guys got a project that you want us to partner with you on? Aside from the road? Aside from 337?
I think there are lots of candidates, and I think our commission is going to have a conversation real soon about what they think would be a really good opportunity. Or maybe we'll come up with a list of two or three and, and transmit it to the county commission for their consideration.
Okay. I do want to throw out there though, there are a lot of folks on this side of the county would like a public swimming pool. There's pools in Gainesville and now we've got one on the east side. But just saying, you know, there's nothing west of I-75. Just, just saying.
And, and I may be out of turn here, but I was just thinking that the city of Newbury can find some land if the county would like to construct a pool within our city limits.
Okay, okay, okay. I did say partnership. You're right.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you, Mike. We're running at two hours now, so I, we can either submit the city hall presentation via email, or I can ask Travis to give it a whirlwind fashion. But whirlwind? Okay. Travis, can you give us the, the whirlwind fashion for city hall? I know it's partially, yes.
I would be very glad to breeze through this. Good evening. It is my pleasure to provide you an update on our city hall project. We recently completed our conceptual design process and we are currently working through detailed design, approximately around 60%. Just some highlights of the project. We have an aging city hall and keeping up with growth and keeping a customer centric priority. We need to expand. Right now, we have departments spread all over the city, making it difficult to, for customers to figure out where they need to go. Six different locations. New city hall, approximately 11,000 square feet. Looking to house all of our departments, aside from specialized ones such as the wastewater department and, and recreation. We're looking at a two story expansion. We have a project team that we developed. If you'll notice, most of their mottos have the word people in there. We're looking for something that resonates with our community, something that our residents can be proud of. And, and these folks are on the team to do that. Here's most recent rendering. Our commission actually hasn't seen this one yet. This is a more, the design is more of something that's along with what we already have. Our municipal building has more stone, more arches, those kind of things. And this building has that. And you can kind of see that here. It's our plan to keep the design with a historical feel, incorporating modern technology and the elements that you'd like in that, but also keeping like traditional facades and decorative details. And here are some renderings of the facility. It is designed to have future expansion, which would go on the second story. Some of the things that we are focusing on, a larger commission chambers, obviously, would be nice to have. We won't be in the gym, hopefully, next couple of years. And the rest of our departments. We're looking to build a municipal complex. This complex, as you can kind of tell, is kind of small. But the new city hall will be just north of our existing city hall and it will be between West Newbury Road and Northwest First Avenue. That is important because of FDOT's plan and city of Newbury's plan for the twin pairs. So something to consider. That's all I got.
Great job on the summary. Comments? Estimated costs right now, Travis?
Around six and a half million.
What are you doing with the old building?
We will renovate the existing building for more offices. And the plan is, as a municipal complex, we'll have some locations for our mayors, mayors, sorry, mayor and commissioners. This design actually shows some of the renovation. Our existing chambers will turn into a meeting room and then additional offices. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Do we have any? All right.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. And that's going to take us to the item that I think probably most of y'all came here to talk about tonight.
Mr. Mayor, man-
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner Wheeler. Are you going to tell us how wonderful we are again?
I just, I thought of the question that I needed to ask about the waste monitor treatment. I'm sorry. Are you all working with Jessica Northley and Congresswoman Kamik? Is she getting money for you guys for this? Because Jessica, I know, is our good friend locally here. She...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our funding team is working with all levels of elected officials, such as Kamiks and the other representatives of our legislative delegation at all levels, state and federal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The answer was yes. The acoustics in here aren't great. We'll fix that at the new city hall.
Because she's always asking how can she can help.
She is. She's been very good. And I think that a lot of the help that we'll be able to get out of DC is going to be dependent on the farm bill. Farm bill passes, I think we've got a shot at some funding.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item three. Okay? I have a favor to ask of the audience for item three. I know that we have a lot of people here who have a very principled ethical stance on the consumption of meat, and we want to hear from you, but this is Newberry residents' opportunity to also talk to the county commission about if the meat processing project moves forward, what are their concerns, you know, noise, odors, those kinds of things. And this is the best opportunity that we've had since 1975 to address County Road 337. So we also have five-minute public comment at the end of the night. So if you are here just to protest, I would ask that you save those comments to the end of the night and allow the folks who are here to talk about what needs to be in the interlocal, the opportunity to focus on the interlocal first. That is a request. We like to treat each other with respect out here. And we are going to have a five-minute public comment at the end of the night, but the interlocal is complex. There are lots of facets to 337 that Newberry residents want to make sure are going to be addressed. And if you live out in that area, you may want to hear from the county about what they're going to do to mitigate odors and smells and those kinds of things. And I know that we have folks here who are here to speak in favor. We have local farmers here. So if there are things that you want in the interlocal, I also think now is an appropriate time to talk about that. So that is my request. If we can try to focus on the interlocal first, and then we can focus on principled statements at the end of the night, that would just help us move more efficiently through the evening. Now, I've got three presenters from the county on this item. I've got Harold Theis, the fire chief, the chief, he's not here, Gus Almost, and Sean. Anybody want to take the lead? Sean, you're going to take the lead on the interlocal? While he's making his way to the mic, I want to say, it is my dearest wish that we can get a positive vote from both boards tonight that will address everything for 337. My plan B is if I can get the county commission to direct staff that you're comfortable with some of the things that we're asking for 337, and then give the managers an opportunity to work that out at a later date. So if we cannot get to an agreement here tonight, I would ask that we don't make a motion, that we just direct our staffs to try to continue working on it. But again, all these folks are here hoping that we get resolution tonight on the interlocal agreement, which doesn't necessarily speak, there's three projects that are in there, and that's why I'm asking to hold the comments about the meat processing until the end, because the interlocal agreement, while there are some aspects of the projects that are in there, the primary interlocal agreement is about trading land for improvements on 337. Commissioner, you had a comment before Sean, get started.
This is also a county commission meeting, and so I would also like to get some resolution on if we're even going to do these projects. And if, I would like to hear from the public about what their opinion is about these projects. So I heard how you framed it. As a county commissioner, I want to hear from the citizens of Newberry if you even want a meat processing plant, and I want to hear your concerns. And then I also want to hear from the rest of the folks in the county, because this is also a county commission meeting. So I appreciate how you framed it, Mr. Mayor, but there's a lot of people here, and we need to have a complete discussion, because if we can't figure out what's going here, nothing's going to go here. So I don't want to presume that we're already negotiating an interlocal until we resolve what we're doing.
Okay. And I just want to give a caveat to Commissioner, because we had a meeting before, your dais, and I was under the assumption that we still had sort of a professional collegial back and forth, and so I engaged in some witty banter with the commissioner that I regretted later on when a manipulated YouTube video came out. So I just wanted to give that warning to my dais that there are folks that are really, really passionate about this, and they're not above, you know, cutting out sections of pieces and trying to make people look foolish. So always unfortunate. I think the commissioner and I just said the same thing. Newberry residents, please speak to the county commission about it. I'd also point the commissioner to a City of Newberry meeting where the meat processing was on the agenda specifically, and Newberry residents showed up two to one, three to one in favor for it. And I'm happy to send that video to you so you can see Newberry residents talking, because I talked to my community for tonight about 337. So with that, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Sean McLendon, Latshaw County's Economic Development and Food System Manager. Mr. Almost is here in the audience with us, nice, who's our solid waste director. I believe the origins of this conversation go back at least two joint meetings ago, where we talked originally about the need for solid waste facilities, specifically rural collection facility. That project scope has grown beyond that, and we've been negotiating with the City of Newberry staff since around February, trading ideas back and forth. And tonight is not so much the end of a conversation, but probably a need for a policy decision from our board on how to proceed, because the nexus of the conversation really resolves around that value statement of the improvements to County Road 337 and the trade-off in the value of the land itself for having a fire rescue facility, piece of equipment located there on two acres, a solid waste facility that could potentially house a household hazardous waste collection site, a rural collection site, and of course, the meat processing center. The structure of the two, the three interlocal agreements are fairly similar between all three. The agreements all have contingencies in place right now for issues that are still to be resolved with soil contamination. I believe we're getting a final report soon that the county can review. But we believe that we also need to have contingencies probably around the question of the road network as well, so that we can continue with the conversation. But right now, from the boards, we do need that discussion about the value proposition. How do we, how do we proceed given the board's current commitments for improvements to Ms. Chair, I think that the interlocal agreements themselves are fairly simple in their construction. The question is, is what questions do you have of us, of them?
I think that Newberry's stance has been fairly consistent. We would like to see lane width, the lane widths wider. Right now, those are nine-foot lanes. I don't believe that they adhere to any current engineering standard in existence today. So we would like the lanes to be wider. We would like you to address the two curves. Those are the primary courses, the primary causes of the fatalities. So whether that, and I'm willing to have the language there simply be address the curves, because I know that it may be better to turn one of them to a four-way stop. It may be better to punch 337 straight north. It may be better to bank the curves. But my concern is, right now, what we're being told is that in your CIP, you do address 337 in 2030, but you have your only funding repavement, not widening the lanes, and you're not intending to address the curves. So what we're asking is, the recycling center, the fire training center, those are all, we're being told, on a timeline of coming online by 26. So we'd like the road to come in with those projects. So if the projects are done in 26, we'd like construction to start in 26. I understand the position that we don't want, you know, construction companies tearing up a brand-new road, so go ahead and finish tearing up the road where it is, but as soon as those projects are done, let's begin to address the road. So from Newberry's standpoint, we are offering what I think is a sizable donation of value of land to partner with three projects that the county has come to us and expressed desire in pursuing. I know two of those projects, I think, are fairly well set in your mind. You'd need those somewhere. One is still in the exploration stage. But Newberry's request is pretty simple. Move the CIP for 337 from 2030 to 26, make sure that we're widening the lanes and we're addressing the curves. So those are the three things that we want to ensure are going to happen written into a contract, and in return, we're willing to donate the land that you guys need. And I know that we are still kind of going back and forth about how much land each one needs. Newberry originally set aside 25 acres, 15 acres for the meat pack and five for each of the other. We've tried to kind of hone down what you guys need. 25 acres is what we originally sort of stuck a pin in, because they were just sort of ballpark numbers that we all thought were good. We should be much closer to knowing exactly how much acreage each of those projects needs, which, you know, is why we might not be able to come to an agreement here tonight, because you guys still need to figure out exactly how many acres each project needs. But that was what we set aside, and that's going to be shovel-ready land. So we're not just donating land, we're donating the services that make it developable. But in return, we want to be able to tell our residents that we're spending their tax dollars giving land away to the county, and in return, they are getting a contract that says this road will be done, and it's not just going to be resurfaced, it's going to be widened, and we're going to do something about the curves where all the fatalities are happening. Is that, Sean, is that what you were asking about policy direction, what Newberry's ask expectations are?
So it's very important for our board to understand the terms that are most important to the city of Newberry, especially for the road and for the remaining acreage to be negotiated. Our board has made certain commitments to the improvement to County Road 337 that...
Speak up just a little bit.
Our board's made certain commitments to...
Yeah, bring the mic up to you, up to you. Let it go up. Yeah, try that.
So our board's made certain commitments to the improvement of County Road 337 that have timelines associated with them that are set by policy. If we were to adjust that, they need to make some hard decisions themselves about what moves around and where the additional funding sources come from. How much of that funding source is paid for, the impacts that the county is responsible for in the environmental park for the traffics there, and how much is paid for from the private sector for the associated developments that happen around it as well? So those are some of the hard questions that we need some help with.
And that is a hard question. I understand that, but I want to reiterate here tonight, because to me, it seems like the position that we should all begin from, if none of the county projects move forward, not a single one of them, if not one more house gets built on 337, if nothing ever else happens on 337, that road still has to be addressed. Those curves still have to be fixed. So I believe the road, I don't want to get lost in as well, it depends on new development, what's coming on down there, what, you know, all of that to me is kind of a smokescreen for confusion. The road, as it currently sits with the current trip numbers, is already substandard engineered. It doesn't meet modern standards. I watched a county commission meeting in 2014. Commissioner Pinkinson was there. The county staff advised the county commission that the road was not engineered to modern standards. So I don't want to get lost down a rabbit hole of, well, it really depends on what comes, and we got to do a traffic study to find out this, that, and the other. As it sits, 337 has to be addressed because of the fatality rate. So that's the main issue for me. Traffic studies are going to help us figure out whether it's better as a curve or whether it's better as a four-way stop, if there's turn lanes, those kinds of things. Engineering standards exist outside of traffic studies. So lane widths, bankments of curves, those things exist whether one person drives on it or a thousand people drive on it. So I just want to make sure we're being clear on that point. You got it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I hear you loud and clear, Mayor. You would like us to talk about County Road 337. We just had our staff give a long presentation on what the county's plans are for 337. What I want to talk about tonight is I want to talk about what are we doing together in the environmental park? One year ago, we had about the same amount of people. I, I, I don't, maybe it was two years ago. And what we talked about was a solid waste facility. I think it was 15 acres. Your backup says six. I want to ask our staff, how much do you need? Because my, my goal tonight is to determine whether or not we're going to have a solid waste, hazardous waste facility and partner with the commission, whether or not we're going to have a fire training facility, which we've already approved, and partner with the commission, and then whether or not we're going to move forward with a meat processing facility. I would like us to not, some would like us to. If we are not, then we have more space. If we are going to move forward with a meat processing facility, then I think we have a number of other questions to resolve. And I'd like to, in my opinion, Mr. Mayor, is I'd like to do all that before I get to the road. And so if we can't get an agreement as to what's going out here, then, you know, we've got a plan for the road. It's not what you want. I hear you loud and clear. And, but we as a board have not had any discussions at all about changing the priority of what you just heard Mr. Gavarete spend an hour on. And so I want to ask our staff, when you are citing the solid waste facility and we agreed on it being here, we stopped what we were doing and agreed to partner with the city, how many acres do you need? Because their backups are six, and I keep hearing 15. And I just need to know what's the number?
Good evening, Commissioners. Gus Almost, solid waste director for Latshaw County. The acreage we're looking at for both solid waste facilities, the rural collection center and the hazardous waste facility is 10 acres.
How many?
10.
10.
10. That's the number.
Okay, so 10 acres is the number, and then the fire training is two, so that's 12. And then the meat processing is 10, so that's the 27?
Twenty-two.
22?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
And 22 is well within the range of what we can offer. You got it, manager, done there?
The fire training facility is not the county's. The county is only providing $250,000 to the city of Newberry to put a tower on a site that is available for our use. We are not owning it, and we are not doing the training facility. That's the city of Newberry. So we're just, we're just providing $250,000 for a training tower.
And that's not untrue, but I just want to be clear that we understand, the county came to us and said, we need a training facility on the west part of Latshaw County. We have also agreed to own that afterwards for the donation. So I view that as, once again, the county approached Newberry and said, we need to work together because we need to offer something over here. Perfectly fine that we're going to end up owning it, but I don't want anybody to think that Newberry came to the county and said, hey, we really need a fire training facility. Can you guys help us? You guys initiated that conversation. So I think the acreage is within. The only thing I don't think we can take Commissioner Cornell's suggestion, because I've talked to almost all of you, and it really, the meat processing is going to come down to an operator. And I think you guys are going to have a meeting pretty soon. So I don't, I understand the desire to kill a project in its infancy, but we don't, you don't have enough information yet to know if you're going to move forward with that or not. I think we can move forward with the two projects that you do need, and if you don't end up putting a meat processing there, we can engage in a conversation later. But you don't have the information you need to make that decision and decide that here tonight. It's going to come down to an operator, as far as I've heard.
I just, we had a lot of other hands. Commissioner, Commissioner Alfred?
I need to respond when the rest, because that's all I got.
Should we use that first? Go ahead. Okay, well, thank you. Since we don't know if we're having a meat processing plant, we do know that we need to address 337, and we need to address it, you know, on a timeline that is at the same time as when these facilities come into operation, that they kind of have to go together. I, you know, believe that we need to have staff, our staffs work together to figure this out. We're not going to figure out, you know, what engineering needs to happen to put it into an agreement tonight or even in the very near future. We need to know that, you know, y'all need to know that the road's going to happen. We need to know that we are going to have land. I think that's in the interlocal agreements that we have. Whether or not the meat processing facility is part of that, to me, is a moot point at this point. That's my statement.
And I know that Commissioner Cornell's saying, referring to me at least, when he says that there are some who really want the meat processing facility, and I'll just say to that end, regardless of whether the meat processing facility moves forward or not... forward or not, I too am in agreement that we need to address 337. And I was actually really frustrated to find out that what we, what you all were told was that it was just repaving, because I'm fairly certain, and maybe Mr. Gavarete can clear this up, that we are intending to expand that to, to address standard, regular road standards. I don't know if that, that included curves. I know you all were talking about banked curves or something like that. I don't know what that means. But I do know that part of the plan was to bring it up to current engineering standards. And maybe Mr. Gavarete could address at least what is in the current budget versus what is not in the current budget, so that we're at least all on the same page about what we would be adding. Because we have known for some time, in fact, this was one of the very first things that came up to me as a commissioner, literally. Like, I got elected and 337, and it hasn't stopped since I got here. So I drove it maybe that second or third day because it was constantly coming up. And I know that it's been an issue for yous too, sir, since you started your job.
Madam Chair, yes, in the pavement management system right now, I did assume widening to 11-foot lanes, because that is the minimum standard for the Florida Green Book. The Florida Green Book, what's called 3R criteria, does not require correcting of the super elevations. Can you hear me now?
That's bad. We're starting.
Okay, start again. Madam Chair, yes, in the payment system and the transportation capital program right now, I did assume widening that County Road 337 to 11-foot lanes, because that is the minimum standard for 3R according to the Florida Green Book. 3R standards does not require the super elevation of the roadways, of, of the road curves. So that is not in the current amount of funding that is budgeted. But widening to 11-foot lanes, the answer is yes.
Okay, that, that's really, I'm sorry, that's really good news, because if that's the case, the Newberry's ask here is even reduced. You're already planning to widen the roads. We're asking you to say you're going to address the curves, and we're open to suggestions about four-way stops, banked curves, those kinds of things. And then we're asking for those, that, that road to come online when the projects come online for '26. So now we're not really asking for wider, because you've already got that plugged in. So that is, that's fantastic. It means that Newberry is willing to donate you a value of land, in essence, for, for really just moving this up, the timeline, right? We're going to give you this land if you're doing it instead of 2030, 2026. And we, I do have a lot of residents here that live on 337 that can speak to the banked curves. I, I want to say that if you resurface the road and you don't bank those curves, that's going to be an even more dangerous situation, because the only thing that slows the folks down now going into those curves is the poor condition of the road. And you've got a Commissioner over there.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Our mic's going off.
Okay, so, um, I'm, I'm trying to. You need me to stand up and like talk into the mic?
Just take it off. It's working well.
How do you, how do you think?
It's a little scary.
Okay, I'll try to not, I'll try to not look at y'all. Now, what was I going to say? Shoot, totally.
Can we take it off?
Oh, there you go. That's much better. I'll try to not echo. Okay, now I remember. We, if we can maybe work together on some requests for earmarks in the next session. It's an election year coming up. It might be more successful than we are in the last one. That might, we can partner together in that ask and perhaps get at least part of the funding for a safety issue. But I, I am in agreement, it would be much more dangerous to widen the road without addressing the banking. It would make it like a racetrack. And I, I'm very familiar with the road, and it's, you know, that's, it is dangerous, needs to be addressed. How we do it, I would like to leave up to staff to figure that out, but I, I would suggest that we consider working together on appropriations requests.
Mr. Wheeler?
I was in this room with everybody, I think, made the motion when the High Springs people came forward and took over the meeting, and you all came to the rescue for the collection center. And I really appreciated you all doing that. It took a lot of pressure off us at the time. So I know that the focus for many of us right now is making sure that this collection center is, is good and set. My concern too, I think, with Gus was to make sure that the, the land that he was asking for was enough, because I think the problem in terms of the, the assessment of how much land we needed to begin with didn't include the fact that we may need to expand. And that was the problem with the other pieces, the other sites that we have now, there's no place to expand. So I think, Gus, is that correct? We want to make sure that you get what you need so that we don't have to divide the, you know, regular collection from...
Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, yeah, 10 acres is planning for the future. So that would take care of us today and in the future.
The amount that we've given, the 10 acres?
That's what we requested, the 10 acres, yes.
10 acres would do that?
Yes.
No? Okay, all right, well, I knew that's what you would say. And, and thank you, because that's what you've been saying all along, that we would have whatever land we need. And, and the road that is going to be required in order to handle the trucks bringing in and out, in addition to fire trucks that they may bring in, I don't know if they're bringing in, would be bringing fire trucks in for a training like that or not, but I do know that the amount of... Gus, can you come back one more time, please? I'm sorry. You're the expert here. In terms of how many trucks that we anticipate going in and out, you know, I know Levita Brown has quite a bit of activity in there too. Would you anticipate how many trucks?
I, I do have a vehicle count. I don't have it with me, but I can send that to the Commissioners.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we did run those numbers and provide those numbers to the people doing the traffic study.
And those trucks that would leave there would go back to, where would they go from there?
They would go to Levita Brown.
To where?
Levita Brown.
Levita Brown?
To the transfer station, yes, ma'am.
So they would go back through Newberry and down Newberry Road? How would...
We haven't determined what route they will take, but yeah, they would, the, the trucks would be the ones that are collecting the, the waste from the residents, from the Rural Collection Center. That would get transported to Levita Brown. Also, there'll be trucks collecting whatever is collected by the hazardous waste facility that goes somewhere else, that doesn't go back to Levita Brown.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So we don't know how many trucks that...
I, I do know, I don't have the numbers with me. I can send that information to, to all the Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And, let's see, Mr. Mayor, there was a question for you too. Thank you, Gus. Crud. Okay. My, my concern, like I say, was to make sure that, oh, I know what it was, I know what it was. If you are working on building a road at the same time you're trying to build this facility, would they not be working against each other? So...
So, projects, then the road.
And then the road. So you're anticipating, you're in, in 2026, you're anticipating having the, having it built. By 2026, you would have the facility built?
In all of our conversations back and forth, that's been the, the wastewater facility comes on in '26. We've, I know that you guys really want the recycling center, everything, so everything has kind of been, we, we want to have all these things done by '26. So our request is that as soon as everything's done, we turn our attention directly, immediately to the road, which would be somewhere in the year '26. It could be at the very end of '26, that's fine, but get the projects done. But what we don't want is our residents to have to deal with all of those construction and then wait four years to get some relief from the road. We want it to happen concurrently, not concurrently right after.
That's what I was trying to clarify. So 2026 not, doesn't necessarily, it could be 2027 that the road comes in.
The finished construction may be into 2027. We would understand that. But if we can see engineering plans, if we can see, you know, some activity, you know, at this point, we love that 337 is on a list, but again, we've had, we've had lots of relationships with lists. So we'd like to get it written down. And I believe that with all of these projects, it's reasonable to ask that the road comes on at the completion of those projects '26.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cornell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so we're talking about 337, and what I'm hearing you say is you want it in 2026. We have it programmed in 2029, that's one. And two, you want to enhance the safety for the curves, and I don't think, any of us don't want any road to not be safe. So that's a discussion. Are we also going to talk about the three items that are going into the park? Because I would like to address that tonight, and I'd like to hear from the citizens. I really want to hear what they have to say. I am in favor of the solid waste facility and what we talked about. I am in favor of the fire facility. I am not in favor of the meat processing facility. So I would, may we speak about that? Is that something, since this is the environmental park that's scheduled?
As, as far as I understand it, yes. We are also discussing the three items that are on the interlocal agreement.
Okay, so, so one of my issues with the meat processing facility is the funding of it, or really the lack of funding of it. We preliminarily moved, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We preliminarily moved this forward back in December, and part of what we decided we were going to do was seek matching funding from the state. I don't believe Elachua County should continue to work on this project, because we did not receive matching funding, and I also don't believe in the project. But whether you believe in it or not, if you don't have the funding for it, you should really just kind of stop talking about it. And so that's where I am now. We had an appropriation, y'all don't... So the mayor's asked, you know, clap, if you, let us just talk. But I do want us to kind of focus on that from my perspective, because this is, for me, turned into a bigger kind of project. We're going to do the road, and we're going to make it safe, so that's a timing issue. And I want our staffs to work on that. I want you all to hear me say that. I want our staffs to work on that. But I want to settle in the environmental park and determine what are we putting here? Are we putting the solid waste facility here? And if so, great. If, and, and then I want to decide, are we moving forward with a meat processing facility? I don't think a county commission should own and, and, and put out an RFP for someone else to operate a meat processing facility. I've said that a number of times. There is overwhelming, well, I'm going to say there's just not overwhelming support for that project. And so I think we should give a clear direction either tonight or tomorrow on whether or not we're moving forward. Last time we discussed it, there were some discussions from our dais about...
I need to make a point of order. We're, I believe that this is off the agenda item that we had. I'm, I'm asking for a point of order because I believe that we're off our current agenda item at the moment. We're, we're talking about the road, and if we can continue and finish that conversation and then talk about the meat processing plant, I think this would go a lot more...
I thought you were asking, are we going to talk about it? I think we need to talk about rather the meat processing facility should be located on this site. I think that we should restrict that conversation to the issues that the mayor brought up about what does Newberry think about what, how this, so should this site be the right site for a meat processing facility? I think the conversation of rather the county has a meat, yeah, processing facility is a broader conversation than one that everyone here wants to sit through.
Okay, that's fine. Let, let me just conclude then with a, a, two quick points. There are 67 counties, not a one is pursuing a meat processing facility. And I know we've talked about let's be the first. I, I just don't think we should be the first. That's point number one. Point number two is even if I thought we should, we don't have the funding for it, and I'd rather us allocate the funding that we do have to many other projects that qualify.
Commissioner Chestnut? I know you, I didn't see your hand about earlier, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that I'm, I'm having some issues here, to be honest with you. I heard a point of order that we're not supposed to talk about the three interlocal agreements that I have before me. Well, you, you said a point of order that, that, you know, we're not talking about the subject of just the roads, but I thought we were talking about all of the interlocal agreements. Because if not, we're going to be here all night, and we're going to talk about each item differently. So, but anyway, my comment is, right now, I, I, I haven't heard a cost on none of this stuff, what it's going to cost, where it's going to be. I've heard from my staff. I don't know what's going on with Newberry's staff and our staff. Are we communicating? Where are we with these interlocal agreements? Are there some disagreements in these interlocal agreements? I haven't heard any of that. So, I mean, to vote on something tonight, and I don't think our staff's together on any of it, makes no sense to me until we have an agreement between the staff, and then they come to us as policymakers and ask our blessing on it. And that's where I'm at. But I have not heard that. And so I get where you guys are coming from, but, you know, there's a lot more to this cost. I'm, 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 I'm sort of a business guy, so I, I mean, you know, I need to know the cost. I can't, I can't sit here and agree to something, and then it's going to cost way more money than the county does to have. And to, to do that, I'm sorry. I know you're telling me to talk into the mic. But, you know, at, at this point, I, I'm not in a position tonight to vote on any interlocal agreement at this point, because I don't know where our staffs are. You know, I don't know if we're together or we're not together, if there's issues with these interlocal agreements or not. You know, I think that I've, I've heard earlier that there, there might be contamination on the sites. I haven't heard anything about that. If there are contaminations on the site, if it's not contaminations on the site. I mean, there's a lot of things. I just can't sit here and, and to be honest with you, and say that I can vote and support something tonight when I don't know the answers. And those are my comments, Madam Chair. And I, you know, I sit in a lot of meetings, I don't say much. I listen, and I try to get a good understanding of what is going on, but right now, I, I don't know where our staffs are with this. Just to be honest with you.
Commissioner, can I just respond to one point of that? In my mind, from talking to staffs, once we have the acreage worked out, which I think it's fine, what the, our staffs are looking for is to hear from you guys what you're willing to do and what you're not willing to do. So that's what we need to get to tonight. Newberry's request at this point, since you're in your CIP, is already to widen the lanes. Newberry's request is to make the road commiserate with the completion of the projects. Whether that's two projects or three, that's yet to be determined. And you guys need those, the first two projects. First two projects, there's no real debate about that. They're your projects, you came to us. I can tell you the cost of the road, I don't know that cost, and I understand that stance. What you're saying sounds very reasonable, but whatever the cost to fix that road today, it will be more in 2030. So the road is not going to get, everything's got, you're a businessman, you know, all the costs are going up. If in this process, in this partnership, because you have so many different projects that are going on there, I think that gives you the ability to pull from different pots. Whereas if you don't have those projects, you're going to be much more limited in how you fund that. Saying yes to moving the timeline up gives you still three years to figure out those kinds of questions. You've got the money, it's about where you're allocating the money. I would point out, just like the Equestrian Center, Newberry came with a financial contribution. That's what we're offering here. I can't promise that we'll have that money to make a financial contribution of an asset in 2030. So right now, the road is substandard. Right now, the road needs to be addressed, whether these projects move forward or not. And right now, Newberry stands ready to be a partner with you. So that's what I'm asking for you guys, to give that direction to your staff on what you're willing to do. And we all know the costs are going to go up, but we all know this is our best shot, and I think...
If I could just ask a question of staff really quickly. We've known that the safety of 337 has been an issue, because we've been talking about it at least for three years, two and a half, that I've been on the dais, and I know it was talked about long before. So do we have a, do we have a plan for addressing the safety issues of 337, aside from repaving? Like, has there been a plan? Is there a plan? I think that that's one of the big question marks that we have as, as a commission on this dais, is the cost of addressing those safety issues. So I would love to hear if we have a plan for that, the addressing those safety issues. And if not, do we have any other major roads with major safety issues that we don't have a plan for, that we also need to be thinking about so that we can add them into the conversation around safety and how we're going to implement this funding?
Madam Chair, we have a traffic study right now being completed by a consultant. The traffic study is not going to be completed until probably mid-September. At that time, we're going to know a little bit more. As far as traffic safety issues, you know, the curves can be converted to a four-way stop, and it will work perfectly. That's not a big, a big expense. You don't have to correct the super elevation on the curves if you go to a four-way stop. And as developers come in, and maybe one day there'll be MMTMs or impact fees where developers can then partner with a city in the county to construct roundabouts or other type of intersection improvements like we do all around the county. That's also an alternative. But as far as other roadways, yes, we have other roadways around the county that actually carry a lot more traffic, and their payment condition index is, is lower than the, than 337.
I guess I'm not speaking about the pavement condition. I understand the pavement condition of 337 is deplorable, as is 235, as is 241, as is every road in the county. But what I'm asking is with the curves, with things like that are engineered issues with a road, do, do we have other roads like that, like 337 in Alachua County that have major engineering issues for, that are causing safety concerns?
We have other roadways where we have intersections that are more problematic than the curves, yes. Commissioners and, and council members, since 2004, there has been 37 crashes on, into, on 337. Two fatalities in those 37 crashes. So, and so yes, that it is substandard, it's only nine-foot lanes. It was first constructed as a farm-to-market roadway. It was not constructed to be a major collector roadway. Right now, closer to northwest, closer to State Road 26, Newberry Road, that traffic is around 1,800 vehicles a day. As you drive south, that traffic goes down to about 1,300 vehicles per day. So that's the traffic on County Road 337 right now.
Wanted to make the point that, you know, we, we conservatively estimated what the revenue would be from the ones at sales tax. You know, as, as is appropriate, we should be, you know, conservative in those estimates. But it's widely believed that we are going to receive more revenue than we have estimated. And so I'm hoping that we also can have additional funding to put towards projects like this. I, you know, I feel like we, we all the time make commitments on things that we don't know if we're going to, how we're going to fund them. I think that's what we do. We figure out how we're going to do the things that need to be done. And with that in mind, I would like to move that we ask our staffs to work together to amend the interlocal agreements, to include whatever additional detail needs to be in there to address the roads, road concerns, and so that we can move forward with the rest of the discussion. I believe that our staffs can work together and can figure this out if we, I, I see Mike New over there nodding his head. If we, you know, give them the direction that, that yes, we, we believe that this road needs to, to be addressed at the same time as, or right after this other development takes place. That we ask staff to work together to figure out how to put this into the interlocal agreement, and that yes, we would address, figure out a way to address the safety issues and to make the road appropriately safe because that's our job as county commissioners, is to do that. And so, and we're, we're making this, you know, this, I don't want to call it, but I guess it is a deal with the city of Newberry. And I think this is, you know, part of, of us working together is to work together towards the project and to make that project safe. And that is, and I think our staffs can work together to figure that out.
Okay. So just for clarity of the motion, so the rest of the board understands, you're moving that we ask our staffs to work together with the city of Newberry to identify funding to move the project up and address the safety standards in addition to the regular repaving project that we originally had?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
So are we, you're not talking, I'm, I'm, I want to support your motion, but I'm trying to understand the breadth of it. So you're just talking about having our, the.
I'm asking the staffs to work together to see if they can figure this out.
To figure out the part for the roads?
Yeah, the roads, just the roads.
Just the roads?
Yeah, just the roads. Because that's the part of this interlocal agreement that we're discussing here tonight is how we're going to figure that part of it out. We've got an interlocal agreement. Everybody agrees on the terms. We don't know if we're doing all the projects yet. That's not part of what, what I'm discussing. What we are discussing is the road. And that's the one part that we disagree on, or not disagree, we haven't set out the details of. And I believe that our staffs can work together to talk about this.
Okay, we're in that, discussing the interlocal with the, with, for the.
Mary Helen, do you mind using the microphone?
We're, okay, I'm, I'm looking for something that's going to support the collection center. I'm not talking about the meat processing.
I think we can work on a motion after we've had this.
The two local agreements, not the three, the two, that have to do with the waste collection because really that's what is important to us in the county.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree. And that's what I'm saying is as part of that, we need to talk, have our staffs talk about the roads.
Okay, but, okay, in addition to?
Yeah. Because it's not in, it's not in the interlocal agreement right now. And we need to have it in there. And, or I, that's what I understand.
Okay. Well, I'll second the motion then.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to up the timeline and address the safety concerns of 337 and ask our staffs to come up with the language to do that in the interlocal agreements?
Right.
That we accept? Okay. Okay. That's the motion on the floor.
I just, first I want to say, I appreciate that motion. I think that's all that Newberry is asking for, is direct your staff to get back with our staff to figure out the 22-acre swap for an elevated timeline and addressing the safety concerns. I, well, I'll let you guys finish out yours. I think that's all we're asking for, and I think that's very reasonable. And I, I believe in our staff's ability to sit down and figure out how to make that happen. So you do, yeah, so.
Would you like to make a mirror motion to direct, direct your staff so we could take comment on that?
Good point. Okay, so county commission has offered a motion to do exactly what we've asked them to do, is to put language in. I got a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Maison. See how quick Newberry does things? Boom, boom, all right.
Oh, Madam Manager.
Staff to work together.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Mr. Mayor, I cannot bring that down. I'm just going to stand on my tiptoe.
Take it out.
There we go. That's a little better. Michelle Lieberman, Alachua County Manager, a few things I wanted to make sure to address. We do not have a meeting of minds of the minds on everything but the roads. We are not there yet. We are still working on those things. I'm not saying that we can't get there. But on the roads issue, we are not going to reach a meeting of the minds unless we have clear direction from our commission on what we are doing. Simply saying to work together to address the road is not going to work. That is what we've been trying to do. We need clear direction. The two segments together of 337 are nearly $22 million that we are putting in 2026 instead of when it was programmed in 2030 and 2031. What we can attach to the project is anything that the traffic study says our impacts are. And then we would do anything in addition to that that while we are tearing up the road, we're not going to tear it up twice. So any pavement improvements and such that are called for, we would do those at the same time. Now, the segment that involves this property is actually Segment 2 that is programmed, or I'm sorry, Segment, is it 1?
Shaun?
Is Segment 1. And Segment 1, that portion is currently $9 million. With the additional things that the city is requesting, that adds another $3 to $4 million to that project, to that section that we have not programmed as part of the 337 improvements. Because we have determined that for safety reasons, that turn lanes and a four-way stop are sufficient. So that is where we've gotten the $9 million for that segment, not the additional $3 to $4 million in improvements. So I just want to make clear to our board as well as to the city, and these are things I've also discussed with Mr. New, where our staff's recommendation was going to be absent explicit direction from the board, would be to do the traffic impacts and then anything while we have that segment of road torn up because we don't want to tear it up twice. But that is several other parts of the road. So if the board wants us to do the entirety of 337, which is both segments, then we need to know that direction so we can move forward. Or if you want us to only do Segment 1, and then do you want us to address the requests that the city of Newberry has to make the improvements? Or only what we have planned to do to make the improvements?
I want to, I, I want my motion to say that we will phase the improvements appropriately. And that's part of my thought about staff working together. We have the limitations of, of the money that we have now, the money that we're going to have. We know that the improvements need to be made. I believe that you guys can work together and create a phased plan that you could bring back to us, or, you know, I, I, but I believe eventually all of those improvements need to be made.
So, but you're asking to move the timeline up. Their request is 2026. So your, your motion, and my understanding, is to move the project up. Are you moving Segment 1 up? Are you moving all the whole road up?
Well, we would only need Segment 1 to, to deal with that particular part of the problem.
So moving Segment 1 up.
So we would move Segment 1 up immediately. And then, you know, we would phase the rest, you know, to come as we had funding or as we.
Which would keep it in its original timeline with the Elm's Nickel in 2030.
Maybe, maybe we do that, or maybe we identify, if, you know, we could put in there, if another method of funding is identified, then we can move the project up appropriately. But that's, that I think could be put into the agreement without a whole lot of headache.
Commissioner Wheeler and then Commissioner Cornell. Use the mic, please.
Are you saying Section 1? Is that what you're saying, Commissioner? No, in phase?
Yeah, I, I said that the staff could work together to phase the project as necessary. I understand that Phase 1 is what we would need right away.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Ramon, if we move these project, if we move forward with adding the cost and move this project forward three years, what projects will not be done?
Commissioner, that's really going to be up to the Board of County Commissioners to decide. You already have a plan that was based on payment condition indexing, traffic volumes, and your other criteria that you selected. It'll be up to this board if you want to postpone projects to do so. And that's going to be depending on how much, what projects, what the amount of money you would have to move to accommodate. Or you can always come up with other funding sources and just add the project. And then in 2020, 2030, or 2031, whenever this section is, comes to fruition, that money that was funded for that portion can be used to pay back some of the extra money that will be needed. But I cannot tell you today or anybody here what section is to be moved. That'll be 100% a board, a board decision.
Yeah, so, so Commissioner, I'm not prepared to support your motion because I don't know what the impact is to the entire plan that we spent two years developing and approved the last couple of months. So I'm going to make a substitute motion, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a substitute motion that we direct our staffs to move forward with a road engineering analysis that'd be completed by the fall of 2023, and that staff bring back recommendations for improving the safety on this road. That's part one. Part two is that we ask to move forward with the city of Newberry on the solid waste and hazardous waste facility, as well as the fire safety tower. That's my substitute motion.
Okay, we have a, so traffic study on the whole entire road and bring up staff's recommendation.
Okay, I think Commissioner Clark, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. Everything we seem to do here with the roads is just money, money, money. We don't have, my question is, I just seen a brief. We got $150 million for buying land with. Why can't we take some of that $150 million over the next 10 years and not buy 200 or 300 acres of farmland or give something in the whatever area and put towards these roads? I mean, Ramon sits here and says everything he needs is $40 million a year. I mean, I got it. I'm a conservation. We don't hunt this land. We don't do nothing with this land but buy it. I say, let's take some of this extra money and get a five-year project here and get some of those big roads done and quit buying land and put it towards these roads.
Can, can I respond to it? I, I just wanted to say that, you know, that would, that sounds like a really simple answer, but the fact is that we had a whole county of folks that voted on a sales tax with an understanding that 50% of it would go to parks and conservation. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have that road money right now because those are the same people that voted against a road tax just a few years prior.
It is a debate, and I appreciate it. We do know that it comes off the tax base and other things. But I'm just saying that if there's any way to peel extra money off instead of buying land, we could do that, and the road manager could sure use it to get us ahead. I don't know if it works or not.
It's just a different funding source. I, it would be a great thing if we could do that, is what I was trying to say. But we, we, we can't, you know, we're restricted on how we can do that. But I, I am interested in looking at other creative ways of finding the money.
Thank you.
That, I, I think the project needs to happen. I think we need to look for those, those funding opportunities that we can find.
Commissioner Wheeler?
And I, oh, I'm sorry. I, I have no problem adding to that motion that we work with the city of Newberry to seek additional funding source, safety funding sources with the state legislature and the federal, federal government so that if we can get an extra grant, that's new money, then perhaps I could move the project up. So I'll add, I'll add, if, if you'd like, I'd be happy to add that to the motion.
Well, I think we're going to go in that direction, Cap.
Yeah, okay. So I'll make that part three.
So right now, your motion is just to direct staff to do a traffic study and come back with recommendations?
Road engineering analysis, complete by the fall of 2023. Move forward on the solid waste and the fire training facility. And then part three, to work with the city of Newberry to seek additional funding, safety funding sources, both at the state and at the federal government to improve the safety of this road.
Okay, we have a lot of folks that are lined up to speak to this. Newberry supports the original motion. I believe that if we let our staffs, if we, if you guys say to staff, "We support fixing 337 commiserate with these projects that are coming on, whether those are two or three projects," I, I think that's what the residents want to hear. They want to hear that we have a timeline, that we're going to address this road. That gives you three years to figure out the funding. I've heard a lot of ideas. We'll certainly help with that process. But again, I, I think we're sliding into this headspace where, well, it's going to be dependent on what the traffic study says. And I want to go back to my previous comment. 337, as it sits right now, with no projects, no new housing, no nothing, is already substandard. It's already dangerous. People are dying on that road, and we need to move forward and fix it now. And we all know that going after grants, going up Tallahassee, those are great ways to see two, three, four years of your life go by. We have the ability right now, if we have the political will, to say, "We are going to do that road right now." So Newberry supports Commissioner Alfred's motion. Again, we appreciate making that motion. I think there's plenty of time and plenty of ability between all of our professional staffs to answer everyone's concerns and bring back in their local that addresses the safety issues and says, "We'll do this road with the completion of these projects."
May I speak, may I respond? This man, I, I appreciate you, your position and your point and you advocating for the, for your commission. I get it, 100%. And I, I will tell you, though, that I am not willing tonight to ask my staff what, what changes from what you have presented to us over the last two years based on all the factors that went into the blender. And so I am willing, though, to work with your staff to see if we can find additional funding sources. But I'm not willing to tell the rest of the county what changes based on, on, on your design. I, I want to work with you, but I'm, I'm not willing to change that right now until I have more information from our staff. I don't know what additional roads wouldn't get done. I don't know if, you know, some would drop off. We, right now, have. We right now have just approved the plan that we laid out and this board unanimously was for and in favor of. And I'm not willing to change that without more information from my staff.
Commissioner Cornell, I don't think that we're asking to change that plan. I think that move the road timeline up, that doesn't mean that we're changing the plan though. Doesn't mean that we're using that funding source, that we're using the Wild Spaces Public Places money to address the safety concerns on this road. We were never going to use that money to address the safety concerns. Mr. Gavarete just finished telling us that. He had never had planned to address the safety concerns on that road at any point. It was not in his plan, period. So what we are addressing and we are asking the staff to do is move up the timeline of that road, which means it's the same cost, further in the timeline, move it up, commiserate with our projects, whatever they are. And secondarily, to find funding to address the safety concerns on that road. I don't think we should replace a single road on that project line, timeline. I think that we should still move forward with the project timelines. I think we should move this road up, commiserate with our projects, and we should find additional funding. If we have to bond the safety project, we bond it. If we use the additional one cent sales tax that comes in, if we, if our projections are great, we also conservatively projected property taxes. Like if we have additional funding, we find the additional money, we do the safety project. But the safety project was never in the project timeline, so it's not getting moved up because it never existed. We're essentially adding a project to the bucket. And it's a bucket right now that, you know, we don't, we only have estimates on how much it's going to be. So I guess I'm, I guess my ideal substitute, substitute motion would be something along the lines of addressing, directing staff to work with Newberry to move the timeline up on 337 to, or the first, the first segment of 337, and to identify funding and options for addressing the safety concerns of the curves on 337.
Much different than mine?
No. Yes.
I think what we need to do too is stay focused on the fact that the whole point of having the road, it's a swamp, you know? It's horse trading. It's done. It is done. And I think what we're, it's important to me that we have this collection center up and running because we need it. The whole idea of the road was to supplement that. Madam Manager, and you're probably not the one to ask, it would be Ramon, but the road the way it is, would it serve what we're trying to do with the collection center?
So, Madam Chair, and that is one thing I was going to address. So to be clear, Mr. Gavarete's comment was as to how safety was put into the pavement management system. Safety is addressed in segment one in the plan. It is a four-way stop and turn lanes. And that was determined to meet the safety concerns by staff in the design of the plan. So segment one does address the safety concerns per our staff. That is the $9 million project that is currently slated for 2030 to 2031. But it does not include the request that Newberry has made that is additional to that, which is another $3 million, which has to do with banking and other things that they have requested. So...
So wait, you're saying that in the current plan, as it exists today, that $9 million, Northwest 30th Avenue and 337 becomes a four-way stop?
And Ramon can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what we were just discussing. And yes, that's part of that. Now, as far as cost, anything that is associated per the traffic study to the project is a project cost. That's what we were saying as far as when you look at the traffic study, what staff was recommending was to do our, what is the impact of our project? And that may in fact include the turn lanes, in which case we would do that portion with the four-way stop and the turn lanes then because we're already going to be on the road doing those things. We don't have the traffic study back to know exactly what those impacts are. But we would do what the impacts are associated with the project when the project is built and whatever it makes sense to do at the same time because we're already tearing up the road in that section. And then what staff was saying was anything that, anything after that would be done in the years that it was already programmed. So that's what staff has been discussing with the city. And if we want to move something up beyond what our impacts are, then we need that direction.
I, I think you're asking for more specificity, did I say that right, here than, than we, than we need. We don't have the traffic study and I, and I, and I don't, and because we don't have the traffic study, I don't believe that we can have that level of specificity because, you know, this is where we have to learn to trust each other and say, you know, based on the traffic study, the county will make appropriate improvements. I mean, we don't, you know, I mean, can we be happy with that?
And Madam Chair, can, what Newberry is asking for is engineer standards.
Okay.
That's what we're asking for. Ask for engineering standards. I don't believe that it's possible, and I think there was a 2008 county study that already identified the curves as substandard engineered. Newberry is asking for engineering standards to be applied. Traffic studies, as I said earlier, in my mind, that speaks to things like turn lanes, stop signs, speed tables. We don't have that traffic study. Newberry is not asking for a stoplight. If you guys come back and say that that first curve, we think should be a four-way stop, that's, I know, right? Actually, it was Commissioner Pinkinson's idea back in 2014. I just stole it. But those are things that when we, what I want in the interlocal is that you guys agree to address the curves. That, in my mind, holds your feet to the fire, that you have agreed to address them, but it allows us the flexibility to figure out the best way to address them. So I think your 2008 study has already, so again, I think we've spent a lot of time here pretty much saying the same thing. I have two, I think I have three county commissioners who want basically to send our staffs back after hearing this conversation and say, "Okay, what, what we want is to elevate the timeline commiserate with the projects and we want to make sure that we're addressing these curves because you're already, what Ramon just said, in public, we're already widening the lanes." That to me seems like a pretty small ask on behalf of our residents for what we're willing to donate. And I, we got a lot of folks here that are, that are wanting to talk. Can we, can we get some public comment in and let them?
I thought you made another substitute motion that got, no, you didn't.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, I mean, my substitute motion addresses having an engineering study done by the fall of 2023. Staff will then bring us back their recommendations and then we can move forward with that. It also addresses moving forward with the facility, solid waste and the fire, the fire. And it also seeks additional safety fundings from the state and the federal government. I think it's exactly what you're asking for.
I mean, I think that my knowledge of how slow, fast government works, that that probably will. I think that what your staff needs to hear is three of you say, "We hear you on 337 and we are dedicated to fixing it and we're going to give you, we're going to give you a timestamp." Right? It's not going to be a list that can change. It's not going to be fluid. It's a timestamp and it's going to address those issues, which at this point is reduced to one. So I would ask for public comment about that in particular. What I hear from my residents is, you know, we've, we've had our share of lists. We want a timestamp and we want to make sure, and anybody that, we got a lot of folks that live on that road. If you have strong feelings about four-way stops versus curves, those kinds of things, now's a good time to let the county commission hear that. But again, I think that we have plenty of professional staff that can figure out the best way forward there. Commissioner Martin?
I'm desperately trying to stay engaged with the conversation and I am struggling mightily. I know this side of the board has a motion as second on the floor. I believe that would be adequate to start hearing public comment.
I agree.
Please.
So let's start from the public comment, then we can, then we can come back to the substitute. So public comment, three. Remember the conversation right now, make a queue. Conversation right now is about 337 and making a land trade deal, 337. It's not about the projects that might go on that. It's about whether or not we can make this compromise. And please state your name, as you can tell, the acoustics in here are kind of rough. So please try to state your name clearly for us.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the substitute motion is about the two projects, so we need to hear from you.
Yeah, we, and we'll get there, but the motion on the floor doesn't have anything about the meat processing in it from the county side. So this is just about land. Correct. So if you want to speak to the meat processing, that'll be later tonight. Right now, it's land, road, 337. That's what we're talking about. And the hazardous waste, waste fire training facility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Paul Hornby, resident of Newberry. Resident of Newberry for 35 years. I was going to speak to a couple of the components of the industrial park or the environmental park, but one thing that I have not heard, and maybe this is just more information for the county commissioners, there are two major developments, housing developments in very close proximity to the environmental park that I think you should be aware as you guys, you know, discuss road capacity and, and things that are needed. These two developments comprise of West Stone Development, which is 850 homes, and County Road 337 Investments, which is an additional 215 homes. So you're talking about just over 1,000 homes that are going to border to the north and to the west of that park. So it's just information showing, I just think none of that was mentioned other than the components going into the environmental park. Just hope that's helpful as you all discuss road capacities and timelines and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Mr. Mayor. My name is Naemer Ched. I am a resident of Newberry, City of Newberry. I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Board and your Chair of the OBOE Task Force. Thank you, Madam Chair, for speaking up on what I'm hearing is a desperate plea here to help us on 337. No offense to the sub-motions, but I keep hearing this bucket being kicked further and further, "Let's do another study, let's do another study." But what I'm hearing from the mayor and also all the forums that I happen to help administer is 337's been a problem long enough. It's not even to the standard. You're going to waste more money on a study that's going to tell you exactly what we know today. It's not up to standard. What I would like to see added to this motion, if I may make a comment, is a timeframe. We hear, we'll, we'll get together, we'll have our city and county staff meet, but let's get down to a timeframe because to me, I feel like telling people, "Hey, we're going to do this, we'll get together." Well, we'll get together in 2024. Well, 2024 comes and it's 2025, 2026, 2027. And unfortunately, lives are being lost on this road. It is not drivable. It is scary to drive down this road. I avoid it at all costs. And I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Newberry that live on this road that have to just get out and have to drive this hazardous road. And people say, "Oh, I wish somebody of the city would live in this road." Well, Mayor Marlowe lives on this road and there's others that have to drive on this road and they deal with it every day. It's dangerous. It's becoming a life issue. So please, let's get a deadline on when we're going to discuss this with staff and let's move forward because I'm really tired of seeing on our forums about 337. I would like to see that we have some sort of good agreement with the county here. And it's, from the sounds of it, Madam Chair, you guys have been working with us lately more and more. This would really show a good unification here of your participation in, you're not pushing other projects, you guys are helping make this project happen. So please, let's unify here. Let's show the City of Newberry that we can work together. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up?
Greg Smith, I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Newberry. I've survived the Mike County Road 337 since 1970. And I mean, I have survived. There's been numerous times I've been run off that roadway. I've had to take evasive action because that road is too narrow. It's in terrible shape. I've had neighbors lose their kids on that roadway, especially on those two curves. Alachua County Commissioners have wasted too much time, too much effort on other situations which are not life-threatening. County Road 337 is life-threatening. Take Commissioner Clark's. Or go with me. Go for a ride with me on some of these roads in Alachua County. That is one of the most dangerous roads. We have a lot of dangerous roads, but that is the most dangerous road in Alachua County. It's time it was fixed. Let's quit talking. The future, we're going to do this. The future, I know it's got to be, but as everybody has said, set a timeline, set a date. Quit bouncing around. We've had a lot of smoke screens thrown out here tonight with numbers. Numbers don't mean a thing until you can put something concrete. Let's do it. Let's get it done. Let's quit playing with lice on this road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up?
Joy Glancer, I'm a citizen of Newberry. I don't think it's up for debate that the road is dangerous. We know that. What is up for debate is what Commissioner Wheeler said, that, you know, it may be a difficult and painful decision to move it forward, but Newberry is making a painful decision by giving land. I mean, it has to be given, both sides have to give, we're giving the land. And I think giving a couple of years isn't a lot to ask and it is, you know, hard. But yeah, we all know the road is bad, but that's my, what I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others who want to speak to the timeline of 337, exchange of land, 337? And you can make a queue if you want.
Ms. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak, Lee Pinkson. And just want, it's not related to 337 because it's, the motion that's up there currently has three different parts. And so when the commission votes, they might want to split the motion because of the three, the three portions. As far as 337 is concerned, I know that's something that's been discussed since at least 2002. I know that it's important to the City of Newberry and has been. You know, there were some safety recommendations that were made, you know, about a decade ago. So, you know, it would, I think it would be nice for the county commission just to give y'all some sort of point in time. That would, because y'all have been, this has been important to y'all for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. Come on down, ma'am.
I get to come back again and talk about the projects, right?
You do. We have another, we have ample opportunities for public comment.
Okay, first thing to my county commissioner. I left you two messages last week. You didn't call me back. I'm not very happy.
Could you say your name? I didn't, maybe you said it and I missed it. Could you say your name into the record for me?
Barbara Seeling, S.I.E.L.I.N.G. I live just south of here. Whoever my county commissioner is, you didn't call me back. I won't vote for you next election. First thing, a couple of years ago when you left it, when you were meeting at the courthouse or whatever, town hall, I challenged all the county commissioners to ride down 337 and come back to 41. At the time, none of y'all, I don't know if any of y'all were on the, were county commissioners in this when Byerly was here. Nobody took me up on it because I wanted them to see how bad the road was. Go figure. And Mr. Mayor, I hope you will become the first government building that actually has parking in front of the door. As far as 337 is concerned, it is terrible. The curves, just fix it with speed bumps. The speed limit's only 35 anyway, I think. The road is terrible. I think it's ridiculous that y'all are using coercion in order to get the road done faster by saying, "Oh, well, if you'll okay the project, if we'll give you this land and maybe we'll get the project done faster." It's coercion. I think it's illegal. I think it's illegal, if not, it should be. Get the damn road fixed. I mean, Mr. Jensen, thanks y'all for giving him two new rims and fixing the front end of his car because it got ruined and all the speed bumps are in the holes. Horse trailers and cattle trailers can't even stay between the lines because they're too wide. You won't mow the road except before rainy season and after rainy season so the water doesn't run off the road. So you can't even see the holes in the road because they're all filled with water. And then when it rains and knocks all the, the patches that you put on them, I personally call them Band-Aids. You put all, because it's like, you know, putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg. And so when it rains, the water sits on them, you run over it, you knock all the fake, the Band-Aids off the soars, scabs fall off, and now we've got bigger holes. How about mowing so at least the water runs off the road? Not that that'll fix anything, but I am very, very angry that you're saying, well, maybe if we give you this, we'll move the project up. Coercion. Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Come on down.
Herb Marlowe, I'm Chair, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. 337. Back in late 1960s, my daddy and Best Bass and other neighbors, they made the land because it's on the section, but they were nice enough to give that curve, which they didn't legally have to. I've been hit on it. I've been barely missed. It's dangerous and you've heard that. But rather than just give you a problem, let me give you a solution. Own three corners. I will work with you quick tomorrow if you'll just move it to a four-way stop. That's my offer today. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Knew that guy looked familiar. Welcome, sir.
How's it going, Commissioners? First off, I want to say that I'm just really beyond disappointed at the situation that's going on. My name is Wes.
Last name?
First of all, I'm here to talk about the road.
Last name?
Foremost. The road is very.
Could you say your first and last name for us, for the record?
My name is Wes.
Do you have a last name?
I mean, it's not important. I'm just trying to talk about the road.
Okay, talk about the road.
Okay.
Wes Blank.
For some reason, it's seeming that this road is being used as a way to, you know, build infrastructure, help these, these roads be widened so they can fit these cow trucks and cattle trucks to, you know, help the potential other project, which is the slaughterhouse, which hasn't been mentioned here very much today, which is probably the main topic being pushed other than these roads, which are very important. If people's lives are on the line, this should be the priority and there should be no other room for anything else that doesn't have to do with the community's interests, especially something that the community at large doesn't have a vested interest in at all. Public tax dollars, they're never intended for private enterprise. I think the roads here are just the common ground, but the expenses that are needed are, they go beyond, far beyond just the road. There's, there's so many projects that the community needs right now and that it makes sense for you guys who serve the community to be worried about what matters most, public safety, things of that nature. Murdering facilities, they're not one of those things that are part of the community infrastructure that helps save lives or protect people or are necessary at all for, for a county especially. Small town, that's so big on respect. I think a lot more respect needs to be paid to the little people who are affected in your county. A lot more discussions need to be, to happen around the people who could potentially be negatively affected versus just, just a small group of elite leaders or representatives that, that are willing to line their pockets for.
30 seconds.
Okay, 30 seconds. We're grateful for Ken for nipping in the bud before it affects the community's opportunity to speak on behalf of its actual demographic. And the capacity for truth to be extinguished, to extinguish the flame of lies spread through generations of indoctrination is indisputable. And the longer we bury our heads in the sand and run from the truth, the harder and faster it will find us. And there's too many people who sacrifice their lives in this country for the ability, for elected officials not to take advantage of us, the working class.
We appreciate your comments.
Yes, and thank you guys for the opportunity to speak.
All right, next up. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Heather Boyd. I am a citizen of Newberry. I just wanted to speak on how the condition of 337 affects our livelihood. We have a agriculture business. We're one of quite a few agriculture businesses off that road that travel that road as part of our business routes. We deliver the product that we grow, which is grass. Sod.
Good, good, Claire.
Residential turf is what we grow. So we use semis, 18-wheelers to be specific, to deliver our sod that we grow. Our drivers are pretty much not allowed to travel on 337 when they're delivering anything west of Newberry. They are directed to go up to 2741, head north, go to the red light, head west. That also then impacts the downtown Main Street flow of traffic when we have multiple 18-wheelers traveling to and from the west side of Newberry in that very congested area. And personally, me and my family do avoid that road because it is scary. It's not really even big enough for two full-size vehicles to pass each other, coming towards each other, without going on the white line or almost off the white line. And if you go off the white line, the shoulder of the road is so messed up that it could easily cause you to lose control of your vehicle. So those are my concerns that I wanted to let y'all know about.
Thank you so much. We appreciate those comments. Next up. Come on down, sir.
Travis Boyd, lifelong member of Newberry and business owner. My biggest concern here is that, of course, my family's safety. We live off that road. It's, we do go the long way to Newberry to stay off that road just about all the time. We do have businesses that require big trucks on those roads and it's very unsafe. We only deliver on those roads if it's locally on that road. We, we avoid them otherwise. And when we do have to use those roads during schooltimes, it's very unsafe when we have to pass and deal with the buses that travel that road as well. In addition, what I understand is that Newberry is willing to give some property for some projects that Alachua County wants to do out there. And in doing those projects, I'm pretty sure y'all will have construction equipment and, and crews transporting whatever and using 337, which will add to the destruction, the further destruction of that road. And I think what if, what I hear is when y'all are done or finished with your county projects out there, Newberry just likes you to fix the road once you're done. And I think that's what I hear is y'all are just trying to move the timeline up from 2030 to the completion of the Alachua County, whether it's a meat plant, whether it's a fire tower and a sanitary station or whatever. When y'all are done with your construction, please fix the road. And I support that 100% and I would really appreciate our county commission supporting that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I want to apologize to all the farmers because I know you guys got to get up about 3:30 in the morning. We're keeping you up way past bedtime. Welcome, sir. Come on down.
Good evening, Jay LaRue. I just want to speak to you really quickly about Highway 3337. Thank you all for, for being here and for listening. And I really hope that together you can continue to work together to kind of make this thing work out. I think I've heard some really good news about how well you have worked together and I just encourage you to continue to do that. The reason that I'm, I'm coming to you today is because I am a resident along Highway 337. I sit on my front porch and I can see traffic going by. I've been riding on that road for 40 years, but I've actually been a bicycle rider on that road for 23. And obviously, a lot of people have told me I'm a little bit crazy going down that road on a bicycle because of the road being so narrow. And I can tell you, I have traversed them any a day when I can keep track of things with my rearview mirror. And as long as there's no traffic coming both ways, I should be good. But unfortunately, I just recently parked that bike because as traffic continues to increase along that road, the decision-making of the people using those roads gets riskier and riskier. And I just fortunately could not afford to continue to ride down that path nor be able to take myself away from my family because of a statistic that I didn't want to become. I, I, as we come across 46th Avenue and you're heading towards Bronson, the very first little hill you hit is the driveway to my home. And I've encouraged my family over and over again, look left, look right, look left, look right, because there's no way out of it if something comes because the roads are so narrow. So my only encouragement is to find, find a way to get together to make this happen, whatever the deal has to be. Let's just make sure we do it for the best interest for everybody, but let's also just do something for the safety of that road. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. Next up, representative. Make sure you say your name into the mic for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair, Commissioners. Debbie Boyd. I was a former city commissioner here for four years and also a state house representative. My pleasure to serve with Chuck Chestnut, Representative Chestnut. I won't repeat what has already been said eloquently by my family, Heather and Travis. What I will say is that I'm almost 66 years old. My husband and I have lived on the Boyd farm between 26 and, I mean, 27 and 337, going on 47 years. And before that, you know, as a teenager and a young person, being on the Smith farm, my other family. And I don't ever remember having seen that road be worked on in over 50 years. And it continually deteriorates. And it is a huge safety issue. I mean, unless it's widened and the shoulders fixed and the curves addressed, I don't think that would, would not be adequate if you didn't address those issues. Anyhow, just wanted to thank you and just to say too, that I am in favor of an interlocal agreement that addresses this road instead of it just being on the list for 2030. If it's in an interlocal agreement, we are optimistic that it will be done. If it's on the list, we were fifth on the list at one time. And I don't know where we ended up. I think it was eighth. Anyhow, please do consider the interlocal agreement to fix the road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Next up.
Hi there. Shannon Blair. First of all, I want to say, please fix 337 for the people of Newberry. I've been hearing about this since the first meeting we attended and they're literally trying to make deals with the devil in order to get this done, you know, involving a murdering facility and I'll leave it at that. But whatever it costs, please just get it done for them. I mean, these people and their families, these are people's lives and safety at risk. I'm hearing there's been nearly 40 crashes in under two decades, pretty much, including two fatalities. That's like a euphemism. Those are people's lives that were lost. Two, two people died. So I think you all need to like not worry about whether a slaughterhouse is involved and get it done. They shouldn't have to be leveraging, building a murdering facility in order to make this happen. But since last time I saw y'all, I have been to several more USDA-certified facilities. And since I always seem to run out of time, I'll just get a little in here. So once again, as always, I've seen animals in horrendous conditions at these USDA-certified and inspected facilities. And also, since last time I saw most of you, I also attended a Sierra Club meeting. And Commissioner Pritsia refused to answer my questions regarding her false claims to the media about grazing cattle. She instead ended the entire meeting without giving the majority of the attendees an opportunity to ask their questions, as was promised to everyone who attended. I've also been reading the papers a bit and I saw that DeSantis vetoed 1.75 million of your proposed funding, so that's exciting. So I hope that y'all just decide to drop it now. Ken's the only one here that seems to be making a whole lot of sense, maybe Charles too, since the last news article I read. I see that Anna's been making more statements to the media. She said there's a small number of vocal community members who are against the facility, but I think that when Ken counted the tallies at the one meeting, the community seemed to be opposed overall, like the higher number. But she also said.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay, I'll finish, I'll finish up at public comment. She said there's been a national organization organizing against it, but that doesn't tell her that the citizens of Alachua County don't want this. Many of the people who show up in opposition are in fact Alachua County residents, but as I've stated at the other meetings, even if we're not right here in the county, these decisions do affect all of us. We do live here in Florida and my family and I have been volunteering here in Alachua County for over six years. We help host events here in Alachua County. And we spend a lot of money in Alachua County and we bring other people to do the same. And we did some canvassing here in Alachua. I'll tell you about that during public comment.
Thank you, ma'am.
You can hear what the people of Alachua really think.
All right. Appreciate those comments and just to remind you right now, we don't have a motion on the floor about the meat processing, so we'll talk about interlocal agreement, the land. So I've heard you speak, young man, you're very eloquent, but I'm not sure now is the time. So if you're going to talk about 337, now you can just come. If you want to talk about the meat processing, it'd be a little bit later tonight. Okay, thank you. 337?
I just want to say about 337, I've heard about rollovers, crashes, all sorts of stuff. The citizens of Alachua County really want 337 fixed, as I'm sure you can tell. And I think that that should be put first and foremost before any other projects because it's endangering the lives of your citizens.
Thank you, sir. Very eloquent, once again. All right. Next up.
My name's Jeff Holcomb. I'm a resident of Newberry. I just wanted to come out today and say, I live on 337. It's incredibly dangerous road. I am very much in support of the interlocal agreement. I hope that we can get this done, as other folks have said. If we can keep it moving forward, that would be great. I won't rehash any of the details that folks have said, but just suffice to say it is incredibly unsafe. I'm just looking forward to the future. Would love to see this done by 2026. I'm going to be teaching my daughter how to drive by 2028. And if this road were fixed by then, that would be lovely. As it is now, you know, you drive down the road and it's like you've got to squeeze your sides in to make sure you don't side swipe the car that's coming opposing you. So I just want to thank everybody in the commission and the city and the county and please let's just get this done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate those comments. Come on down, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jordan Fairfield. I also serve on the City of Newberry Planning and Zoning Committee. I want to talk to you tonight, a little bit of background. As a senior project manager and program manager for the federal government, Department of Interior, as somebody who has a general contractor's license, owns a construction business, and as a citizen of Newberry, I personally cycled and taken my daughter when I taught her to drive down 337, and that was almost the worst mistake of my life. That's how dangerous it is. And if you haven't driven on it, I encourage you before you cast your vote to drive on the road. Additionally, for the federal government that I work for, I have the capability of swapping lands, swapping roads, doing what some would call earlier tonight a quid pro quo within the matter of a week. And the fact that we sit here tonight and can't come to an agreement on just the ideology of doing an internal agency or internal local agreement is mind-blowing. And then you want to sit up there and can't understand or can't fathom why the people here in the audience are frustrated. That is mind-blowing because all we're asking for is, hey, we don't want to talk about what's going on. We just want to know, are you open to the idea? Additionally, as somebody who has performed and gone through traffic studies before, for somebody like yourself, gentlemen, to say by the end of the fall, it's astronomical. If you haven't sat on a traffic study, you should because it doesn't take to the end of the fall to perform a traffic study. It takes a matter of a couple of weeks or days evenly, depending on how much you expedited according to the MUTS manual. So I would encourage you, and if you don't know what the MUTS manual is, it's the standard for traffic safety. for traffic safety and how to do a traffic study. The fact that you're questioning and letting this go to another year, and then you sit there and wonder why people are frustrated, this is exactly why, because nothing can get done. So I encourage you and implore you to come to an agreement so we can move forward, so we can worry about the next thing that Alachua County needs to worry about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. He's been a welcome addition to the PNZ. Well of knowledge. I'm sorry, ma'am, you already spoke on this agenda, you get one time per go-round. So next go-round, you can come back up. Next time, we have another motion on the floor.
Nobody else is talking.
Yeah. Well, then that means we can move forward. We have one right there.
I'm Janice Smith, and I'm a resident of Newberry. I live on three thirty-seven. I love where I live. I love my neighbors. I love my community. I love all of y'all. And I have faith that you're going to do the right thing. I think that you know, from all of this that's been presented, there's been studies. There's been surveys. We don't need any more of that. So I just have faith that you'll make the right decision, and you'll go ahead and vote tonight to do something about three thirty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more comments? Come on down, sir.
Good evening. Ted DiBracki from Newberry. I just went to Cedar Key on Saturday and realized why I don't go that way. I mean, the way that the road changed once he crossed the county line from Levee County was just disastrous. I guess we're mostly talking about the Newberry Commission's motion. I'm not sure that there really is one from Alachua County, or maybe there's three, or I don't know if any of them were seconded. But I think what you all have proposed is a very good negotiating position as far as trying to get something for the land that you're going to be giving up for the solid waste treatment facility or whatever it is. It's that simple. If the county wants to do something on our land, they should give something back to us. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Couldn't have said it better myself. Other comments on trading, potential of swapping some land for elevated timeline for three thirty-seven? Come on down, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Tanya Freemuth. I'm a Newberry resident. I live off of where three thirty-seven turns into two sixty-six on the west side of Newberry Road. We are afraid to drive down three thirty-seven. We've seen a little bit further south, some of the crosses that are on the roadside from people that have died, and I have to look away when we drive past it. I think the whole point of the interlocal agreement is for the county to get the land and the city to get the roads fixed. And part of the big controversy in all of this is the meatpacking facility, and you guys have nine million dollars set aside to get this road fixed. And I heard the manager say that there's only about three million more that needs to be coming to play to give the city what they want to make sure the safety issues are addressed. And why can't that money come from this meatpacking facility instead, since there's so many people against it and it's so controversial? And then that way, the county can get the big projects that everybody seems to be for and agree with, and then the city can get their road, and then we can speed up this timeline and we can make it safer, because why would we put that off? Safety and lives. And I think, since the controversy is the meatpacking facility, why don't we put that money towards it? I think there's so many better projects for that money to go towards anyway, and since this seems to be where we're stuck at tonight, why can't we allocate that towards the extra money that we need for these safety issues that need to be addressed? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments.
Do you want to take a motion to extend our meeting?
Do we? Oh, we do need, Newberry has a rule about going past ten thirty, so I need a motion from our board to extend the meeting. I have a motion from Commissioner Martin.
You have to set a time.
Yeah. Let's, I mean, I think we're almost done with here in public comment on three thirty-seven. Everybody else wants to speak to the meatpacking. As soon as we get this motion done, we can go to the public comment and talk about meatpacking. So, thank. Thirty minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Martin, you made the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend until eleven o'clock, and if it's appropriate, I'd move the question on our motion as well, and we can wrap that part up.
I think it's going to be, our motion's going to be pretty easy. So does anybody else want to speak to three thirty-seven, particularly in the land swap and that part? If you're here to speak about the meat processing, that's going to be up next. Three thirty-seven, come on down, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor, we're good till midnight, right? Yeah, so I'll say as long as I can to hear from everybody.
I had a second from Commissioner Mason. Oh, I didn't call for a vote, I'm sorry. I got a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Mason. All those in favor of motion on the floor, say aye. I got, I got Commissioner Farnsworth, did you not vote?
No.
Okay, I got three, two, motion passes, extend the meeting to eleven. Ma'am, go right ahead. Will you say your name for us?
I think it's a shame that since the April fourth meeting, Mayor Marlowe had said something about the community-
Did you say your name already?
I'm sorry, Malena. Mayor Marlowe in the April fourth meeting had said something about everybody being excited about this murder facility coming about, and now I'm hearing that this road, three thirty-seven, is a huge issue in the community. And once again, I feel like you're ignoring your community, because we have canvassed the area and we have found out different, that your community does not want the part of this murder facility here. They do want this road fixed, and I think it's just you're doing them a great disservice by ignoring the people in your community once again. So please fix three thirty-seven, because it's a human issue, and you should be taking your residents into consideration before putting together a murder facility. There's going to be construction going on in there. Nobody's going to be able to bring in materials to make this murder facility if you can't fix this road. You're having people dying, people crashing. This needs to be addressed first and foremost with the money allocated towards this. So please listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Anybody else on three thirty-seven? Are we ready to move on? Okay. I agree that it's probably best for us to do our motion first, and then you guys can hash out, because you're the ones that got the motions and the substitutes and all that. So the motion on the floor is direct our staffs to get back together with those two primary considerations, elevation of the timeline, commiserate with completion of the projects, which we anticipate to be twenty-six, and addressing the curves. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Madam Chair?
All right, y'all. Commissioner Cornell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we heard tonight, two major developments coming up on that road. Is the city open to allocating impact fees for those developments for the use of that road? That might solve the whole problem.
I think that can be part of the conversation, but again, I'm going to go back to my first comment. The road as it stands, right now, you've heard from residents here tonight, they've lived there for half a century, the road as it stands, if it's a pre-existing condition that needs help, that's why we're offering a million dollars' worth of assets to the county to cover a cost that is associated with the county. So we're already doing that. I don't mind having that be part of the conversation, but again, if a developer came to you and the traffic study said, "Well, the conditions already needed a stoplight." Well, the developer wouldn't pay for the stoplight, because the conditions already needed a stoplight. I have a road, the county has a road, that already needs to be addressed. So I think I just want to keep our focus on that point.
I know where your focus is, Mr. Mayor. I've heard it, we're delaying what a lot of folks' focus are, so that we can hear yours. I got that. But my point is, is if we could have a discussion, or our staffs could have a discussion about the impacts, that might free up some additional funding. That's point number one. Point number two, Mr. Gavretti, can we make a stop sign? Can we just make a three-way stop immediately? Is that, I heard that suggestion from one of the individuals, that that would immediately make it safer. Is that something we can like do? I'm happy to do that.
We would have to look at the geometry, Commissioner, with stop signs come turning lanes also. So that's part of the, that's part of the traffic study, and to tell us also how long the turn in lanes or transitions for that.
And how long would the traffic study take?
The traffic study will be finalized by mid-September.
Mid-September?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we currently have two motions on the floor. We have substitute, well, we have an original motion to move the timeline for three thirty-seven up concurrent with the interlocal agreements, and to identify, have our staffs work together to work on the safety issues and the details. Okay. And then we have a substitute motion on the floor for, Commissioner Cornell, read your three. You read your three again.
So the move that we do a road engineering analysis, which will be done, I guess, by September, I said by, completed by the early fall. Two, move that we move forward on the solid waste hazard waste facility and fire training facility. And three, that we work with the city commission to seek additional funding sources from state and federal government for safety in our road improvements.
Okay. So the second motion is to do an engineering study and to have our staffs work together on a federal appropriation and to approve two of the interlocal agreements at this time. Okay.
Just to comment on that, I mean, the part of the interlocal agreements needs to contain the part about the roads, and so I don't feel comfortable approving the interlocal agreement.
So we'll split the motion then, and I'll just have the first part of the motion to do the traffic study as one motion versus your motion to move ahead with adding the time, moving up the timeline and for the existing conditions of the road, and then to have staff work together on funding for the safety improvements. For, and that's for segment one, right? Sorry, I didn't state that, but that's what you meant for segment one. Okay. Well, we're starting with the substitute motion. We're splitting it, though. Right, so I'm splitting that off. So we're just voting on the first part of the substitute motion, which is to move forward with an engineering study, which we're already doing. So I'm not, I'm confused at how that's actually a motion, because we're already doing the engineering study for the road. We're actually already, so we're already, but we're now splitting the motion. So the first part of the motion is only to do a traffic study, which we're already doing.
You have agreements, because the agreements are not finalized on either side. So it wouldn't be, I'm not, I don't think that was the intent of Commissioner's motion, but we don't have agreements that are ready to be approved. Those were drafts.
So are you, okay. So all in favor of the first part of the substitute motion, which is not to move three thirty-seven up, but to do the traffic study and wait, and then make the decision to move the road up? Okay. All is in favor of that motion, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay, motion fails, three, two. Okay, so the second part of that motion is to move forward with the, I'm sorry, I'm tired, the waste treatment facility, the hazardous waste facility, the rural collection center, and the fire tower, and direct our staffs to develop the interlocal agreements for those.
Say that again, because I didn't hear all of those-
The hazardous waste and rural collection facility and the fire tower facility.
That's, I thought her motion was only to move the road.
I'm doing the second half of Ken's motion, because it's the substitute motion, so we're still on that. We're still on Ken's motion.
Oh, we are? No, we just voted. We just voted on that, and it failed. Now we're on Mary's vote. Mary's motion was to just deal-
Well, we had split his motion, but that's fine. Okay. If y'all want to be voting on all of it, that's fine. Okay.
No, just to deal with the road.
Okay, so, fine. We're on the original motion. If that's, that's the favor of the board, that is not totally what happened, but, okay. We will now vote on Mary's motion, which is to move up the timeline for three thirty-seven concurrent with the projects that interlocals to be discussed, and to direct our staffs to work on addressing the safety issues of the curves in three thirty-seven and identify funding. Yes?
Say the rest of that? I'm sorry, it's hard to hear.
I'm sorry. To move up the timeline for the first segment of three thirty-seven concurrent with the projects and interlocals to be discussed, and to direct our staff to work on identifying funding and solutions for the safety concerns of the curves.
Okay.
And the rest of the road. Okay. All is in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, three, two. Okay, so we have the road solved. And now we will move on to the interlocal agreements. Certainly heard Commissioner Cornell's feelings on the matter. Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes, I believe that because these are drafts and that there are a lot of questions that need to be answered, we need to just not, we can discuss them, but not do any voting on these tonight. The one thing that I would ask the city commissioners, the land that is offered, I would say that we, instead of leasing that land, that needs to be sold to us for eight million dollars or whatever it is it's going to put into the road. From what I understand, that's okay. We don't have to worry about leasing it, we can own it. Right.
Yeah, it was our understanding that it was a county proposal to lease the land. If y'all want to own the land, that's, I don't think we have a dog in that fight.
Well, I just, you know, I just wanted to make-
I thought it was, I'm sorry, I thought we were kind of mirroring the Equestrian, not the Equestrian Center, but the Extension Office, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, from a logistics perspective for providing utility services, it is best that the City of Newberry retain ownership of the land, provide as long a lease as the county feels is necessary. I don't foresee that's a deal breaker, but I do think that is something that staff, city staff believes is an important element to the agreement.
I think that the major issue was that the item under discussion is, we understood it, at least it's what we were, we had been communicated, was that they, we were looking at a license agreement rather than a lease that would be revocable. And our concern was that the significant investment that we would need to make into infrastructure on those properties, vertical infrastructure, would be such that we wouldn't want to be entering into a revocable agreement. We'd want a solid, long-term agreement for our facilities to be able to be there for the long term, a hundred years or-
Mr. Mayor, we started the conversation with the understanding that we were trying to mirror what the agreement that we had had with the county at the Equestrian Center and the IPUS Extension Offices. I don't think there's a deal killer in there. I think there are certain sensitivities that we would like to maintain. If that property does come under the county's ownership, we're going to end up in an electric territory dispute potentially, and providing electric service to all the customers in our city limits has a level of importance to us. So that is, you know, to be transparent with what's behind the city's ask on this is that, and I think that it's something that now that the county is aware of the why behind our requests, that we could come up with an amicable solution.
And we can find some number of centuries that you guys are comfortable with. It doesn't have to be a thousand, it could be nine hundred ninety-nine.
Mr. Wheeler, did that answer your question?
Yes, I just think that there's, these are drafts. We're not ready to vote on these things, but there are some questions that regarding, you know, confusion about what we've heard is going to work and what won't work, and so we need to make sure that we've got clarity before we even, you know, go forward with these things, because there are a lot of unanswered questions. And of course, you know, if this, if we have to move the facility somewhere else, then of course, the concerns about three thirty-seven, you know, in that form, you know, will have to be discussed again, because of course, we understand that there are dangers on that road, and we want to address those things, but they may not be in conjunction with this if we can't come to an agreement through these interlocals. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we are moving on to Harrison and Helen.
Okay, so what are we hearing from the public? You want to hear specifically about all three projects? Okay. Yeah, okay, so I think at this late hour, I'm going to go ahead and speak for all of us that we're waving our final comments, and we're just going to go straight to citizen comments. So this is the five minutes, anything that you want to address the county commission on. If we have any Newberry farmers left in the room at this time and hour, we'd love to hear your thoughts on a possibility of a meatpacking. Again, that, as far as I- Again, that, as far as I know, that project is really going to be dependent on operator, so it's, we still have some unknown variables out there. The other two projects, we feel like you guys are pretty well set on, and you've already heard us talk, talk about how we support those. So, Mayor, Commissioner Alfred? We got nine minutes.
Your meeting is ends at what time?
Eleven, so we have, we have nine minutes, but at this point it's citizen comment, I know that our, our commission will stay and listen to Newberry residents talk where we were done voting, so. Citizen comment, five minutes. Janine, are you holding the clock? Will you just give me a signal when we're at thirty seconds and I'll hold up three zero, let you know you're down to thirty seconds? Will you state your name for the record, ma'am?
My name is Sheila, and I oppose the slaughterhouse. Animal agriculture has been and still is mostly responsible for wild animals losing their home, their houses, homes, and habitats for cruel and unnecessary food that we don't, we do not need. So instead of building a murder facility on fifteen acres of land, a place where sentient individuals are taken to be murdered and dismembered, dismembered there, why not restore the land and give it back to the wild animals by planting lots and lots of trees for them? Animals don't want to be murdered, they don't want to be killed, they don't want to be slaughtered. Again, I say, why not give the land to the wild animals by planting lots and lots of trees for them? Humane is showing compassion and benevolence. So how do you show compassion? By killing someone who doesn't want to die. So why not give the land back to the wild animals instead of building a murder facility where innocent animals are taken there to be murdered and dismembered? Why not restore the land and give it back to the wild animals by planting lots and lots of trees we are taking from them? Why not give it back to them? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Come on down, ma'am.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Valerie Bronstone, I have lived in the High Springs area, Alachua County, about twenty-five years, came to Gainesville to go to school here.
Can you speak up just a little bit, we got some background.
I have a degree in animal science, so I know a lot about animal agriculture and food science. I'm also a mental health counselor. So in addition to the cruelty concerns and the climate concerns and the environmental concerns, there's also mental health concerns about slaughterhouses. For those of you who might not know, it's an extremely dangerous job to slaughter animals. You've got thousand-pound steers kicking people in the chest because they're strung up to be bled out, because that's how they die. They are not dead when they are strung up on a hook and they're bled out to death, which means they are still kicking and fighting for their life. People can get kicked in the chest and the head, it's a very dangerous job. So you're talking about sharp knives and saws, I've seen it, I've been on the kill floors, unfortunately. I stopped eating animals fourteen years ago because it is so cruel, what happens to animals, and I can talk about that for days, but what I really wanted to talk to you about tonight is the mental health impact on slaughterhouse workers. It is equivalent to a veteran that goes into combat. These people that are paid low wages, by the way, to kill animals all day, they have to numb their feelings to do it. It is incredibly stressful and traumatic. I, as a professional in the mental health profession, work with trauma, PTSD, depression, and anxiety every single day, and I can tell you the impact that that has on people's lives. PTSD can, can occur from different places, but working in a slaughterhouse is incredibly traumatic, and there are many studies out there that show that, starting with the first kill, okay? And basically, these people have to numb themselves to, to what they're doing all day, which means they're suppressing their feelings, which means a lot of these people, there, there's a much higher incidence of depression, anxiety, and PTSD from this. And in addition to that, when people can't cope and deal with their strong emotional responses to things, they turn to drugs and alcohol. It's a very, there's a very strong link between people that experience a lot of trauma and drug abuse, alcohol abuse, addiction, and suicide. So, I know that we're talking about, and I'm so glad everyone's so concerned about trees and the environment and all of this good stuff, but real people have to do these jobs, and they're really grisly, ugly, horrible jobs, and people in these jobs do not receive the kind of care and aftercare that they would need. So when you're looking at, what does this really cost? This costs a lot more than, than the money to put up a facility and hire some people, because this takes a toll on people's mental health, and there are, I am happy to provide lots and lots of articles and research articles on this subject, so I could list lots of other reasons why I'm against the slaughterhouse, but as a mental health professional, I can tell you that the impact is, is immeasurable to people that have to work there. And people burn out, people get hurt, they get, become disabled. The other piece to that is that people that tend to work in slaughterhouses are people that are desperate for work because it is very, very difficult, dirty work, and so a lot of people get taken advantage of. Undocumented workers tend to wind up working in these places, and people that, that have no other choice, they're trying to feed their family, and I totally get that, but they're getting a lot more than they bargained for, okay? So I just want to say I'm a hundred percent against this, and I also know that cities that, that build slaughterhouses in their, in their community wind up with higher crime rates. And so, anyway, there's, there's just so many reasons to not do it, and I want you guys to think about the mental health concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Cheyenne Lukeender, I'm a local, I live and work here. My passion is public health, I care deeply about communities and the people that live inside of them, as I'm sure you guys do too. You guys should really spend your time and effort and money on improving communities and not destroying them. There's a lot of opposition to this slaughterhouse, call it what it is, it's not a meat packing facility, animals are not just meat, they are animals, they're being slaughtered, their lives are being taken, no matter how you frame it. Regardless though, I see a lot of impacts of people eating animals, it's not healthy for you, it's not necessary. Pay for your abuse, enslavement, and murder with your own money, I don't want any part in that, okay? It doesn't belong, it's not something we should be taxing people for. I do not want my tax dollars going towards a slaughterhouse. There's lots of people who live their life without doing that kind of damage to animals, and you really don't need to do that.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Come on down, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Hole, I'm a proud resident of Newberry in Alachua County, and I feel really grateful to live here. However, I strongly oppose the use of our tax dollars to own and run a government slaughterhouse. Personally, I'm plant-based, and because of that, I have endless energy, I compete in ultra-marathons, and I've even run a hundred miles in under twenty-four hours. I didn't come here just to do a humble brag, I mention that because in order to do my training, I have to cover a lot of ground, and so a lot of my training is done on the roads of Alachua County. And getting my miles in, I see these farms as I run by them, and I notice sort of a common theme, there's a lot of "don't tread on us" and "let's go Brandon" flags. I happen to be a little bit more independent, libertarian myself, but I can't help but think about when I see those flags, the irony of asking for government money to fund a slaughterhouse. The literal definition of socialism is to control the means of production by the government. Yet they're asking for a handout from the Biden administration while at the same time criticizing him. Thank goodness Governor DeSantis did the right thing, but they want the government to run the means of production, which is just super confusing to me, and I, I don't get that. Shockingly, our mayor, who I think is a great guy, keeps repeating the same talking point that everyone in Newberry is so excited about this, I can, I think you can see from tonight, that's not the case, not everybody, but it does seem to be everybody that's excited about it is somebody that will personally benefit from it, which, that makes sense, they, they have a vested interest in it. At one of the meetings, the mayor or somebody on the commission sort of joked that the people that were against this, like us, were potentially paid by PETA. Again, there's just the irony of, obviously, we're not here paid by PETA, but those that want it actually will benefit from millions of dollars of government spending, so actually the opposite was true. If the county's going to get into supporting specific businesses and industries, why not have an Alachua County plumbing supply house? It would benefit all the plumbers and homeowners, right? Sure, you could go to Home Depot or Lowe's, but wouldn't it be better to have a small government-funded store? Although we certainly need government for critical roles, I do not want them owning and running businesses. Again, when the government owns the means of production, that literally is socialism. Imagine if the shoe was on the other foot and the county wanted to build and run a five-million-dollar tofu factory. You all, rightfully so, would be very upset. These proponents knew they'd need to pitch this to Alachua County for additional government funny, for additional government money, and so they dressed it up with all the terms that they thought you all would want to hear, terms that they normally would consider woke. They proposed a utopia where a slaughterhouse was going to promote equity, equality, economic justice, be good for the environment, pay living wages, follow super strict safety practices, be humane, and heck, even a place where kids can go on field trips. And somehow, all of this was also going to result in lower user fees. There's a reason that Tyson, Smithfield, and others run huge operations with massive, massive scale, pay low wages, and ride the line when it comes to laws and safety, because they're a business and they want to make money. In no way is a small-scale, low-volume, high-wage, equity-promoting operation going to make money. No operator will touch this unless they are backed financially by the county, meaning us. Either the county residents will continue to pick up the tab and cover the difference or it won't happen. Chair Prizia, when presented with the fact that virtually no other county in Florida or anywhere has a government-run, government-funded slaughterhouse like the one being proposed, said, "Maybe we can innovate and lead the way. Let's lead the way with the most innovative dog park or something else first before we jump into owning and running a slaughterhouse." It's such a bizarre push considering that even cities with privately-run slaughterhouses aren't excited about them or wanting more. They're the places in the outskirts of cities that realtors don't talk about. So before you vote tonight or in the future, please ask why almost every person who wants us to move forward will benefit personally from it, either as a farmer directly or a faculty at UF whose career centers around animal agriculture, and why everyone who is against it will gain nothing. They aren't here, they're either here because they are true conservatives who don't. They're either here because they're true conservatives who don't want government-running businesses, neighbors who don't want water contaminated or housing values diminished, religious practitioners who don't want to be deeply offended, medical professionals who are already worried about the health of folks on the standard American diet, and just animal lovers who don't want harm to be done in their name by having their tax dollars fund a government slaughterhouse. Please vote no to socialism, no to government owning and running the means of production, and let's move forward together. Thank you.
Well done, sir, four fifty-nine. Good job. And just for the record, I think you're a great guy, too. Next up, come on down, young lady.
Hi, good night. My name is Emma Hole, and I'm a resident of Newberry. I strongly urge you to stop plans to build a slaughterhouse. I'm a registered nurse, an ultra-marathon runner, I too have run a one hundred miles in twenty-four hours on a vegan diet. And I just want you to know that humans can thrive on a plant-based diet, and I wish everyone could feel as good as I do and experience the same health benefits that I, my family, and my friends have all gained by going vegan. And although I wish slaughterhouses didn't exist at all, I certainly don't want my government owning and running one using our tax dollars to build something that would endanger our health, reduce property value, and harm the environment. There are comments I could share from a neighbor and friend who had to leave early because it was going so late, and she also opposed it, but she'll email her comments, her name is Shetul. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate those comments and the conciseness. Come on down, welcome.
Hello. Hi, my name's Cody Elton, and I'm an Alachua County resident. Keep it short, I've spoken before. One clarification, the YouTube video was not manipulated, it was edited for time, and that was, the words that were used were what was said during the meeting, I was present at it, and it was not manipulated to make anything change the meaning of what was said, so, for clarity. And I'm guessing you already know about the online petition that was put out when we all figured out what was going on, when we learned about the plans for the slaughterhouse. As of now, there's about five hundred Alachua County residents' signatures on it, more from other places, but that were concerned with Alachua County. That's a lot of people, there's not five hundred people on either side here, so having, other people did want to come here and speak or be online, and that that's not available in this location, to just take into consideration, not everybody can attend these late-night meetings, and all that rig and roll. So, thank you guys for being here and listening to us. I am happy that the interlocal agreements are going along, and I'm not against any of the other ones, I just find it very interesting that, that the slaughterhouse is the one thing that is very controversial, it motivates people to stay up till eleven o'clock at night and speak for three minutes, five minutes or whatever it is. So I feel like that should tell us all something, that this might not be what we want our government doing. Like, this is kind of what people don't like about government, you get a pet project that somebody says they love, that they've been thinking about for years, and then all of a sudden it's put into the interlocal agreement that we want our roads fixed, we want the other stuff done. Not everybody wants a slaughterhouse built. Like, if that's what you want, maybe go into private industry and do it that way. We don't want our government dollars spent on this, it's not helpful for everybody, this is not what our taxes should be spent on. You talked about an off-ramp, here is the off-ramp. Do the right thing, don't spend our money on something that is controversial, we are all here trying to make the community better and help other people. I don't even know where 337 is, but I want you to fix it. People need it, it needs to be safe, but this is just such a controversial issue, I hope you'll look at the controversy that it is bringing up and make the decision based on that, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Welcome back.
Thank you. Shannon Blair. So, I mentioned earlier, we did a little bit of canvassing here in Alachua County, and some of the things that Madam Chair has said are not very accurate, and you too, Mayor Marlowe. So, before you start, you know, thinking that we canvassed a bunch of vegans, you should know that seventy-one percent of the people that we surveyed do currently eat dead animals. So, I think this county has a lot more vegetarians and vegans, though, than most, but that being said, not even eleven percent of the people that we surveyed said that they do want this slaughterhouse to be built, that's only about one out of every ten. And even less, just about seven and a quarter percent of the people that we surveyed think that this is something that the county should own. Seven and a quarter percent of the people surveyed think that this is something that the county should own. Only five and a half percent of the people we spoke to were okay with it being built on an environmental park. Seventy-five percent of the people that we spoke with did not know that the commissioners had previously voted to spend two and a half million of federal aid on this, however, once they were informed, over eighty-seven percent said that they were not okay with commissioners spending two-point-five million dollars on this or voting to do so. We've determined that most people don't know anything about this in the first place. Sixty percent of the people that we spoke to, right on the dot, sixty percent, didn't know anything about it. So you can be assured that public opinion is not well-represented here in these meetings. Mayor Marlowe, you also mentioned at one of the last meetings that your family's properties touch at least two sides of the proposed property where this would be built. It makes a lot of sense, we've seen the map and a lot of properties own there, I think your family might, might actually own that ninety-six acres at one point, not all that long ago, but it seems like at these meetings, the people who show up are the people who care deeply enough to not have this happen, whether that's concern for the animals or the environment, or people's health, or the mental health of the workers, but I, I'm, it just seems like anybody else, like was mentioned, just has something to gain off of it. So, most people don't know about it in the first place, and if they do know, they might not care as deeply as we do to take time out of their busy days to come here, but those of you county commissioners who are wondering, this is not something that the general public wants to happen. We're going to probably go out and canvass tomorrow again, maybe after the meeting, because we probably won't have time before, but I'm sure that we're going to find out the same thing. And I wish I had realized how much 337 was affected, because I would have put that on my surveys also, but I could almost guarantee. my surveys also, but I could almost guarantee that most people would want something like that handled because the lives of human beings are, you know, in jeopardy over this road. I hope that something can be worked out, once again, about that, that does not involve this slaughterhouse. I think it seems that this is what might be holding you guys up in getting your road fixed, is even having this as part of your agreement. So, again, now that DeSantis vetoed 1 and 3/4 million of the money that you were counting on, you should just drop this. I mean, it's silly to go on and on. I do want to add that if I ever lived here, I would never vote for Madam Chair, and I would probably spend time on a campaign if I could to stop her from doing things like this in the future. The tone that was used so condescending towards Commissioner Cornell earlier probably made everyone in the room cringe, including your fellow commissioners. It was hard to watch. I do want to address a couple of the grazing myths while I have a little bit more time, but it's been told to the media that this would lower carbon footprint because it would take the cows off the road. And I just want to let everyone know that's not scientifically possible. There is never going to be a situation where just a little bit of transportation is going to offset the methane and the nitrous oxide and the carbon dioxide that come from, 30 seconds, especially from cattle. So, counter-to-industry claims grazing systems cannot sequester large amounts of carbon for long amounts of time. All forms of cattle grazing, regardless of management system, do result in net increases in greenhouse gases, particularly methane, 86 to 87 times more potent than CO2, and nitrous oxide, 296 times the global warming potential on the 10-year timeframe. So, while it's true that some of the grazing systems can sequester some carbon in soils, the potential is much more limited and nuanced, so I encourage everyone to look into that because this just needs to go completely. We need to divest.
We appreciate those comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Marlowe.
Commissioner Martin?
I know that our board's way over time, and we've already lost a couple of commissioners, but I just wanted everybody to know that I will, I'll be here until the last person leaves, but if we need to adjourn our portion and whatever.
Our voting portion of the meeting is concluded, so we're at citizen comments at this point. So, I appreciate your willingness to stay. Yeah, we appreciate that. All right, young man? And I'm not sure by the little galley of asking a miner to say his name, but I think we've got it for the record, so you don't need to say your name on camera, because I didn't ask that question.
Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today in strong opposition to the construction of a slaughterhouse in our community. This proposed project raises numerous concerns regarding human rights, animal rights, and the environment that warrant our utmost attention and action. First and foremost, the establishment of a slaughterhouse poses significant human rights issues that we cannot overlook. Slaughterhouses have long been associated with exploitative and dangerous working conditions. Workers within these facilities often face low wages, long hours, lack of breaks, and inadequate safety measures. It's our duty to ensure that every individual, regardless of their occupation, is treated with dignity, respect, and fair working conditions. Furthermore, the ethical implications surrounding the proposed slaughterhouse are deeply troubling. Animals raised for meat endure unimaginable suffering throughout their lives and ultimately face cruel and inhumane deaths within these facilities. The inherent cruel, the inherent cruelty within the slaughterhouse system is incompatible with our values as a compassionate society. We have a moral obligation to protect and advocate for the rights and well-being of all sentient beings. In addition to the concerns for human and animal rights, the environmental impact of a slaughterhouse cannot be understated. Animal agriculture, including slaughterhouses, contributes significantly to deforestation, water pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions. The resources required to sustain such operations, such as land, water, and feed, place an enormous strain on our environment. As stewards of this planet, we must prioritize sustainable practices that minimize the harm to the environment and promote ecological balance. Moreover, the establishment of a slaughterhouse can have severe implications for public health. Scientific research has linked the consumption of meat from these facilities to various diseases, including heart disease, diabetes, and certain types of cancers. By promoting plant-based alternatives and encouraging healthier dietary choices, we can improve public health outcomes and alleviate the burden on our healthcare systems. Given the multiple concerns raised by this proposed slaughterhouse, human rights, animal rights, environmental impact, and public health, it is imperative that we reassess this decision to proceed with its construction. We should explore alternative approaches that align with our values of compassion, sustainability, and responsiveness. Together, let us envision a future where our community embraces practices that prioritize the rights and well-being of all individuals, human and animal alike. Let us work, let us work towards a society that fosters compassion, respects our environment, and promotes a healthier and more ethical way of life. Thank you. And as of now, at least two of you have some sense. Have a great day.
I guess we don't have to hear from you anymore.
They turn, yeah, 11 o'clock. Thank you for those comments, young man. We appreciate it.
You left.
Yeah. The thing fell apart.
Barbara's back.
Go ahead.
And I'd like to say to county commissioners who don't live nearby for staying, I see the locals left. Okay. They, those who live close left, those who don't stayed. Thank you. I'm still going to get to say what I had to say. I think y'all are putting the cart before the horse, because you seem to think that the only traffic is going to come from the north, so you want to fix the north. I don't know how you're going to get garbage trucks and cattle truck, cattle trailers and all that up 337. I used to have pictures on my phone, and apparently I got rid of them, because the road isn't wide enough for two cattle trucks to cross each other on 337. So they won't be able to get to that meatpacking place that I don't want, and I'm a carnivore, okay? But I don't want the, the refuge place there either. Because I want to know, why do we need 10 acres if it's just a drop-off? It's going to be a dump, isn't it? Just like the one on Archer? Where is that stuff going? Is that going to be leaching down into the aquifer? Is that going to be going into our springs? I live down by Watermelon Pond. What are you shaking your head no? Where is, where is the refuge going to be going? Is that going to be a dump site? It's just going to have boxes there? Why do we need, why do we need 10 acres? Because if so, where's the, where's the waste from the packing center going to be going? Is that just going to be going into the dump next door? I mean, I don't know. I mean, what kind of smell is going to be coming from it? It's right next to the school, basically, right next to the waste management place. I mean, I have missed earlier discussions about it, my bad. But I mean, you're talking about fixing the north end of it where the, where the facility's going to be. I know we're not talking about the road anymore. But you're acting like the only traffic for this place is going to be out of Newberry. But it seems to me there's going to be an awful lot of traffic coming from the south, like Newberry, like Bronson, Archer, wherever else the garbage comes from, but you're not going to fix the south part of the road till 2030? Give me a break. I mean, again, coercion. We'll give you land, and then we'll fix the road. How about fixing the road first? And then worrying about getting the trucks in there. I'm sorry, do I not trust the government? What do you think? Why should we trust the government? What has the government done right for us in the last 20 years? The government takes a shot at us every chance, they don't keep any of their promises, why should we think you're going to do something? Oh, yeah, we'll fix your road, wink, 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 wink. You think there may be, maybe we'll go ahead and fix your road? Maybe not. Well, maybe ought to start fixing the road, and then, what? If we don't, if we don't give you the treatment plant, we don't give you that, we don't agree with that, then you what? We won't fix the road till 2030? And then what? Another 15 people can get killed on the road? And you'll go, oh, well, see, you should have given us the treatment plant, you should have given us the, the, all the everything else we asked for. Is that what's going to happen if we don't agree with it? Because that's what y'all have made it sound like, that we're not going to move it up till, from 2030? Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am. Keep rolling.
Quit popping on it. My five minutes isn't up.
Well, you sure ramble. I think he's applauding you. He's, he's showing his support.
Is that what he's doing?
Hey, don't call me out, lady.
Don't call me out.
If it wasn't for military, you'd just be speaking a different language. So, don't give me no trash. All right. Let's keep our, let's keep our comments this way. You've got time.
I was, I was talking. And I'm angry.
And you got, keep on going.
I'm angry, because I don't believe any of y'all have our best interests at heart. I'll believe it when I see it. Because all I've heard about is what's good for everybody else, but I don't know that any, like I said, we'll give you this land if you'll move this up, if long as you give us what we want, then we'll try and fix your road faster than that. But I, what, are you guys going to fix the road for us otherwise? Or are you just playing this game that all government officials play? Is our road going to get fixed before 2030 or not? We'll see, won't we? I don't want any of it, unless you can show me it's not going to affect my water for my aquifer.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Next up, come on down.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kelly Walsh. Thank you, guys, for staying so long to hear us all out. I'm speaking in opposition of the proposed meat processing facility in Newberry. My primary concern is that the construction of a slaughterhouse is a completely inappropriate use of public funds. The government wants to take money from the public so that they can own a for-profit company.
Go over there. Don't come this way. You can say what you want. Go away, woman. Hey, hey, excuse me, excuse me. Let's have some decorum in the room, right? We manage, I know it's getting late, I know tempers are getting feisty, right? Ma'am, sorry, we'll, we'll add on to your time. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The government wants to take money from the public so that they can own a for-profit company. I do not believe that is the place of the government to financially assist a private industry. And animal agriculture is already the beneficiary of excessive government assistance. Inadequate processing facilities is not a public or governmental issue to resolve. Meat producers are for-profit companies and should be responsible for their own success or failure based on the merit of their business. Animal agriculture is not sustainable and must be allowed to fail. Plant foods require significantly less water and other resources to produce. Raising meat for consumption is incredibly inefficient. Plants must be grown to feed to the animals that people eat. A much more efficient food system would utilize this land and other resources to produce plant-based foods directly for human consumption. Providing plant-based foods to humans rather than animals would truly improve food access for food insecure populations. The board must also recognize that this project clearly lacks public support. Based on statements made at previous meetings, it's apparent that the majority of the support for this project comes from meat producers. The meat producers expect to financially benefit from this governmental spending, so their support is not surprising. However, meat producers are a small segment of the population and are not representative of your constituency. In addition, the plan presented does not meet the stated goals of the project. A small slaughterhouse that plans to kill 15 animals per day will do little to address the bottleneck described by the meat producers. The plan was also portrayed as an effort to improve food access in our community, but the reality is that local meat processed in a specialty facility will demand a higher price than the mass-produced meat currently found in grocery stores. This will not assist the members of our community who face food insecurity and will not provide direct relief to the people as the American Rescue Plan intends. The board must also recognize that building a slaughterhouse in Newberry would not improve the community. A slaughterhouse is not a good neighbor. I can speak from experience, as I once lived in close proximity to a slaughterhouse. The town is renowned for its terrible odor of animal feces and the rancid smell of blood. The blood smell permeates everything. It coats the walls in your home and the inside of your mouth. I've also witnessed firsthand the horror of animals being driven to their death, and I've heard the screams of animals fighting for their lives inside the facility. I do not wish these experiences on the citizens of Newberry. I was also able to witness firsthand the reality of slaughterhouse employment. These are dangerous jobs that most people do not want. The positions are often filled by the most oppressed members of our community who suffer greatly in this dangerous and stressful vocation. Animals do not need to be slaughtered. Humans do not need to eat animals to be healthy. I'm a registered dietitian in Gainesville, and the evidence is clear that animal products have a negative impact on human health. The evidence is particularly clear in the case of red meat. A vegetarian diet is associated with a lower risk of death from ischemic heart disease, which is our leading cause of death. Vegetarians have also been shown to have lower LDL cholesterol, BMI, and blood pressure, as well as lower rates of type 2 diabetes and cancer. Governmental support of animal agriculture is an irresponsible decision for public health. I understand that the board wishes to do something visionary to help our community. Supporting an environmentally destructive and unsustainable industry to promote the private interests of meat producers will not help our community. I urge you to consider a more appropriate use for these public funds. Please vote no and do not allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Next in line.
Hi, I'm Lacey Webb. I'm an Elatua County resident. I would like for everyone to get off their phones and give their undivided attention, because if you were speaking, I'm pretty sure you would like that same respect from us. A total of $5.25 million is what I believe I read about the alleged cost of the slaughterhouse. It's not a meatpacking facility, it's a slaughterhouse. It's not nice. Let's call it what it is. And $2.5 million are going to be ceded from the American Rescue Plan, which could actually go to our farmers in our community directly here, you know, fix our roads, but instead we're going to do meat packaging, I guess. There are 600 children in Elatua County schools that are experiencing homelessness, some of those right here in Newberry as well. Here's the cold, hard facts about slaughterhouses. Laws regarding these types of facilities are weak and hardly enforced. Each year, the US slaughterhouses use billions of water to process and render animal carcasses. US slaughter facilities produce millions of pounds of pollution annually, meaning our water and air and quality will suffer greatly. And I'm pretty sure we all know that this whole area makes a shh, large amount of money out of the springs and our rivers here. I don't know about you, my family, we don't want to see that, we don't want to smell it, we don't want to hear that. My son loves Newberry. We come here all the time. He does not want to hear the screams of animals in a slaughterhouse. Let's also talk about how despite all the improvements they try to say they make in the industry, I think it's an increase of 25% in direct disposal of slaughterhouse waste pollutants into waterways, because the EPA doesn't really keep track of that stuff. So, you could tell me it's going to be humane, you could tell me it's going to be tracked, but it's not. They sell the dream as providing jobs, and employees are often minorities, black, indigenous, Latino, or immigrants, and, you know, but the immigrant laws that just passed, you're not really going to find a lot of people who really want to work those jobs, to be honest. So, good luck finding people to exploit. The majority of slaughterhouse employees, 30% at least, are at or below the poverty line, and they're subject to a work environment that ensures violence, brutality, all the time. The positions are dangerous and unsafe, especially on the killing floor. Slaughterhouse work has been directly linked to higher levels of aggression, anxiety, and hostility. Some suffer from PTSD, like that lady mentioned before. These employees often resort to negative coping mechanisms, like she mentioned, such as substance abuse and addiction. Researchers also discovered that slaughterhouse employment was associated with an increase in total arrest rates, also for violent crimes and sex crimes, not limited to rape and killing as well. I don't know about you, but the funds that can be used to benefit this community should not go to a slaughterhouse. We should actually put it into the people, into the community. Think with your hearts and your heads, not your wallets.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. Next in line.
Good evening. Thanks for staying so late. I'm really, my name is Leah Cohen, and I'm, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Agricultural Justice Project, but I'm going to speak from my heart. I've been working with the Agricultural Justice Project for 20 years. We work, we're a coalition of workers, frontline workers, farm workers, food chain workers, family and community farmers, that really is working across sectors and coll... family and community farmers, that really is working across sectors and collaboratively to build a food system that is based in respect, that's based in thriving livelihoods for the people who actually do the work of making our food. And this project, this meat processing facility, this slaughterhouse, has been something that I've been really excited about because I work with a lot of organizations nationally that are trying to build up local food economies in fair and just ways, that this is exactly the kind of project that they're excited about. And some of them wrote to you all, county commissioners, this week. The National Family Farm Coalition that represents 42 farmer, fisher, and rancher membership organizations, including those in Florida. They represent in DC on policy work that supports this kind of values-based system. The Farmworker Association of Florida represents thousands of farmworkers, black, indigenous, Haitian, and Latino farmworkers in this state, and they wrote in support of values-based meat processing facility that abided by mechanisms of accountability, transparency, living wages, ethical treatment of animals, humane butcher, humane butchery practices, and transparency of alignment with those values to the public, as did the Food Chain Workers Alliance, which represents over 370,000 food chain workers across the country, and also works on the same sorts of values-based systems. And they wrote in support, given the adoption of strong mechanisms for transparency and accountability to the values that you all have stated in the proposal. And I read the statement of work, and there were a lot of improvements made in implementing some of the, in stating some of those concrete values and the ways in which they would be carried forward. And I have further recommendations that I'll share tomorrow, but I wanna say that the reason that these organizations wrote in support, and it's been years of organizing work and understanding where each of the groups are coming from across sectors and what are the challenges, and a lot of the stuff that's been said tonight is absolutely true, but that's the reason that this is such an exciting project to these national-based organizations, is because this is an opportunity for us to do something really different. And I know it's really hard to see past the fear-based language, but I'm gonna ask you to be brave, to do something different, to break the status quo, because the status quo has been hurting people for a very long time. And let's be clear that if you do not proceed in a way that is strong, with strong metrics, transparency, and accountability, and the recommendations that are being brought to you by these groups that have been working on these issues for so long, you are choosing to continue to invest in the systems that all of these opponents are talking about. Because that meat is already being eaten here in Alachua County, and it is already being sold, and if we don't replace it with something, we know that we are not gonna get 100% vegans in this county. It's just not gonna happen. Even the most like optimistic animal rights groups who are working on these issues in real ways, know that's not gonna happen, and so we have to look at alternatives that are gonna really change the values of the food system. And I wanna say that if you end up canceling this project before it's even really explored as a possibility, with funding from the federal government supporting these kinds of work, with a demand increasing for humane and local meat processing facilities and butchery techniques, if you kill it, and then you use ARPA funds in November to go buy turkeys from publics to give out to communities that are, that can't find food in their communities because big food, including the grocery stores, are putting residential liens and deed restrictions on land to keep competitors out so that people don't actually have access to the food that they want, and paying poverty wages, it will be an ironic tragedy.
Thirty seconds, I apologize, I should've given you the warning.
That's alright, I'm good.
I appreciate your comments. Next up.
Hello. My name is Carrie Bagnall, I'm the founder of Jungle Friends Primate Sanctuary in Gainesville, and I moved to Alachua County 25 years ago because of what Alachua County represented. We were looking at Florida to bring the monkeys here for a better climate than the west. I'm from Nevada. And we chose Alachua County in particular because it was forward-thinking, environmentally-friendly, and green, and all of that, and liberal, and we felt we would be welcomed here, which we were. And the last, and we are a vegan organization, and the last meeting that I went to for, with the Alachua County Commissioners, was when they were having a monkey rodeo, where they chained monkeys on the backs of dogs and they raced around. And they had them every year at the fairground in Alachua County. So I went, we went to talk to them about this, you remember? And I was just against the monkey rodeo, didn't know what else they did, cuz I didn't go to the fairs. And everyone said, oh, we've gotta stop that, and I forget who it was that said, well, wait a minute, I'm opposed to that, and I'm like, what? And he said, I want all animals out of the county fair, you know, out of the fair. So it was voted to only have domestic animals. So my experience with Alachua County has been really wonderful, and we've, you know, had such a good community. And there are a lot of places, if you buy meat, I've got, right next door to Jungle Friends is 80 acres of cattle, and I see the cows in, you know, from my back porch every day. And so there are ways that you can buy humane meat, right here in Alachua County, but a slaughterhouse in Alachua County, when, it just, it just seems off to me, just to have something like that, that we've got here, because there's so many important things that need to happen. The road, I think, it sounds like, I haven't been on the road, or maybe I have and I don't remember, I don't get out much, but it sounds like the road needs to be fixed before any building is done even, cuz it sounds pretty bad, I don't know, but I think that if, I mean, everyone's agreed on the first two projects and getting the road done, it seems like that would be a no-brainer than to throw something else into the mix. So thank you.
Thank you ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Next in line. Welcome sir.
My name's Adam Bronstone. I'm a professor of politics. And, you know, one of the guiding principles I teach my students in their first year of university is the classic principle of do no harm. I'm not gonna talk to you about all the other things that people have said tonight. First of all, I think it's bizarre, of course, that a government should fund a for-profit organization, cuz I don't think that's the role of government. I don't think the BBC in Britain should have a rock and roll station when there's already 13 of them, cuz it makes no sense to me. I think that if a private organization can't make it on its own, then the government shouldn't help it out. I think if the state of Florida has already said no to this project, that should be a very strong indicator. I think that if there's only one person who spoke tonight for this project, that should also be a strong indicator, that not everybody in this area is for this. But you've heard, and you probably know about, of course, the labor standards that happen to these places, the pollution, the challenges that bring to a community of a slaughterhouse in any community, forget about inside a community and not out in the country. But I'm gonna talk to you about do no harm. So unlike my wife, who spoke earlier, and many other people, I'm not an Alachua County resident for 25, 35 years. I moved here, what, a year ago? We moved a year ago. Trust me when I tell you, this wasn't the first place I was thinking of moving to. We were living in a different city. My wife kinda dragged me here, because this is where she's lived for 25 years. I grew up in the suburbs with no nature. I walk out the back porch of my house in High Springs, and I love it. I can see the sky, it's quiet, smells great, we like our neighbors, it's quiet, it's just lovely. I've come in the last year to enjoy living in the country, and then specifically, right here in Alachua County. I'm not telling you anything my wife doesn't know, that she kinda almost dragged me kicking and screaming to come live here. But I'm very proud that we moved here, and we're making a life here, and we intend to stay here. So I tell you what I tell my students. The guiding principle of political decision-making, which is never easy, should be do no harm. Even the most classic liberal who believes in the freedom of the individual still believes in a guiding principle of do no harm. That if government acts in a manner that will harm, it should cease to act. That the do no harm principle comes ahead of and before individual liberty, always. Do no harm to the environment of this area that is so pristine. Do no harm to this environment because we do not know the long-term consequences, well the truth is we do, to the environment of this area that we love and that tourists come every single day to enjoy. Do you want to be the people that might have to say to a tourist, we're not sure about the quality of water in this area, but come to the springs anyway with your children? Do no harm to the health of the people of this community, cuz we do not know, nor do you, nor do I, the long-term negative effects that a slaughterhouse will have on the kids that are one-year-old today, much less me or someone older than me. Do no harm to this environment. Do no harm to the people who live here. Do no harm to the people who are going to have to work in this place, in this awful kinda place.
Thirty seconds.
Do no harm. I didn't come to this area willingly, but I'm willingly going to stay in this area. Do no harm, please.
Thank you sir, we appreciate those comments. Next in line, come on down here lady.
Hi, I'm Tanya Fremeth. Again, I'm a Newberry resident, and I guess I kinda have a question why this is called the environmental park. I know originally you guys were thinking about doing wetlands, but I thought I remember at the city meeting that it was determined that that wasn't even possible anymore, so I was wondering what's the environmental aspect of the park? And sharing his sentiments also, you know, he's saying that we don't know the long-term effects on children, but there has been a lot of studies. I sent an email last night, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read it, but there's a lot of scientific studies, water, air, land testing for places around, or for neighborhoods around facilities like this, and there's a lot of respiratory illness and neurological illness linked to this, particularly asthma in young kids. And, you know, I know you guys kinda glaze over when you hear the animal side of it, and if it doesn't bother you to think about the children hearing the animals scream, at least think about them breathing this in, because you guys are gonna be spraying the toxins from your enlarged water treatment plant, and you're taking on three other cities too that are developing cities, but now you're adding this slaughterhouse on top of it. And there are multiple documentaries that I have seen even before I went vegan, that have stuck with me about the people in these communities getting sick, and it's, most of the time it's low income, they would never dare build this around schools. And that was one of the first things I thought about besides the animal aspect of it. I mean, I wasn't born a vegan, I was a heavy fisherman. I killed my own fish, and I ate pigs like they were going out of style, and I developed a connection to the animals, and I changed, and I'm not trying to force anybody to go vegan. I mean, of course, I would love to have a vegan world because it's not just better for the animals and our health, but it does better the planet. And I'm worried as a Newberry citizen also about the land value, I'm worried about the smells. I spoke in the past about just being at the university with a sick animal, and the wind changed and it almost knocked me off my feet from the smell from the slaughterhouse across the street, and, you know, that smell does get off-gassed from the facility. There is a ventilation system, it's not just contained within the walls. As Kelly spoke earlier, who used to live next to it, she could smell it within the walls of her own home. And I just, I don't understand why we're funding something so controversial when that money could go to so many different things, and then after speaking tonight, as I spoke earlier about, you know, the needed funds to fix the roads, like, why can't the money come from there? Or the strikeout hunger project that a very small amount of the ARPA funds are going to, it blows my mind that two and a half million dollars is going towards building a facility, and you're trying to fundraise more, but then to strike out hunger, you're just allocating a small portion, and the majority of that, which is supposed to be expended over four years, is gonna be taken away the first year just on Thanksgiving Day. I mean, to me, that's not striking out hunger, that seems like waste, and this money could go towards something. I think at least some of that funding should go towards, more of that should go towards the strikeout hunger. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, we appreciate those comments. Come on down sir. You can pull that up just a little bit, if you, just gotta like push one, yeah, there you go. There you go. Thank you. And then maybe if you'd lower it for the young lady behind you when you finish speaking, that'd be nice, she's not quite as tall.
Yes sir. Thank you Mr. Mayor, Madam Commissioner, and all Commissioners, thanks for staying, and I haven't had much experience with this side of the room, but seeing these Commissioners' work has been a real privilege. And get to know the Mayor a little bit too through this. Typically, people are exposed to a government that's just gonna do what it wants to do, and it's been refreshing to see people are actually digesting the issue, you know, mentally, emotionally. To hear the Commissioners speak last time about their position, where they've come from, the steps they were gonna take to understand the issues and the best ways to move forward was compelling and inspiring, and I just wanted to thank them for that. And I'd like to think that they're gonna continue to work on the food security issue. I do think that's something that's very important, and something that should be near and dear to everybody's heart. And I, they seem willing to work with their colleagues and engage the community, and I know that that sort of collaboration can really bring some meaningful solutions and systems that can support us, and provide security, comfort, and really, a platform, you know, for people to explore their freedoms. And that's really what government should be about, is addressing roads and hospitals and these things that need to be done, you know? They can't be disregarded or minimized in any way, if you're talking about living beings. You know, that's the, that's the kind of America that we all wanna be a part of, where we care about each other, where we look out for each other, where I'm not gonna go to sleep at night if I know that my neighbor has an issue, you know? I'm gonna at least see if I can help him, and that's one of the beauties of this community, is, and it's wonderful, like I said, to see it reflected in the people that are representing the people. So I would encourage, if possible at this point, to reexamine the, really, the premise that brought, you know, this to the forefront, and look at food security, and see what, you know, can be done from that side, work with farmers and community members, and to see if there are things that can be done, should another crisis arise to challenge the community in one of our most important issues, and that's food. So, you know, thank you again for your service, and I look forward to seeing how this, you know, moves forward, and I'm in favor of fixing the road too, so, thanks again for everybody, and best wishes, and everybody home safe too. Thank you.
Thank you sir, we appreciate those comments. Welcome, there you go, you watch people do it, there, just push it together.
Hi, my name is Macy Vance, and I've been a Newberry resident for almost my entire life. I wanna thank you guys for being here so late and giving up your time. I've noticed we have I've noticed we haven't had a lot of people speaking for the meat plant right now and I think that's due in part to how late it is and like Marlowe said, the farmers have gone home. But at the last meeting I went to, we had a lot of Newberry citizens who were really for this project. And regardless of your opinions on eating meat or veganism or any of that, if we don't get this plant, people are still going to have farms and they're just going to have to send their meat far away, which is not beneficial to the environment, it's not beneficial to the citizens, it's not beneficial to the farmers. Having a local government-controlled, you know, meat processing plant gives us a lot of a more in-touch feel to our own agricultural heritage. I've been in Newberry for all of my schooling, I've grown up around 4H seeing farmers, I know how important farming is to our community, and I understand how helpful it would be to have a meat processing facility in our area and not have to send all of our cattle, livestock, far away, get it shipped back, that's raising costs, it's beneficial to all the farmers here. And I think that's a large population for our city and that was all I just wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments.
County Commission to recognize the time and your board policy.
How many more people want to speak now? We have one, two, two.
Three.
Three, so we need 15 minutes.
If I would move, we extend the meeting to 15 minutes, to 12:15.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on one second.
Fifteen. I'm sorry, is the 15 minutes just to extend the public comment or are you going to have any additional discussion after that? Or is the...
All right. Are we good? We got a vote? All right, sir, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Marlowe, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Do you want to give me a one-minute clock? First, let me address some of the things that have been said, which I think are mixing apples and oranges tonight. A lot of what you heard described is industrial agriculture. Those big plant plants are four to 500 animals an hour. You know, that's not what we're talking about here. How I manage our farm and how most of us do is, the gentleman talked very eloquently about doing no harm, we're beyond that. We're rebuilding soils, we're improving the environment, we're sequestering carbon, the methane levels are a lot lower in the management practices that we use. The health data, ladies and gentlemen, there's new health data that talks about the benefits of grass-fed beef. You know, the science is far from settled in all this. So to present all this as negative is not to talk about current science and knowledge. But beyond that, I'd really like to talk about a different topic. All of you ran for office because you wanted to make some kind of impact, specific or general. There's real-time impacts that you make immediately and there are potential impacts that you make and you hope it becomes that. There are four impacts I'd like to talk about. The first is a potential impact for those of us who are in the livestock industry, and yes, this would be enormous. It would make our family farms viable generationally. So that's a good impact for a few of us, and I admit that. Then there are a couple of realistic impacts that say if this doesn't move forward. Is anybody in the cattle business in Alachua County going to go out of the business because this doesn't happen? No, you know, we're going to be in the business. And is there any less, fewer hamburgers going to be eaten if this doesn't happen? No, you know, we're a meat-eating society. But the other potential impact is one that you can leave a legacy that no other county's been able to give. You know, I've heard this phrase, two and a half million, toss the lot. Lee County has spent between 350 and 450 million dollars to spend by 30,000 acres of land. If you view this as an economic development investment, where you're trying to strengthen agricultural economy here, for two and a half million dollars, you have the potential to create 240,000 acres of land, to look like it does today, open and rural and spacious. So I would reframe this. This is not taking money for the private sector. Counties spend money on economic development activities all the time. Some work, some don't, but they do it because they believe there's a tremendous potential to do good. And that's what this is. No other county in this state, and I've worked in just about all of them, has been able to do what you can do through this decision. And I'm not talking just about livestock and meats, I'm talking about the five-acre folks who do specialty crops. You know, you need a broad economic, agricultural economic development strategy. This is a key part of it because a lot of the land is in livestock, but this is what it is. You get one chance to really leave in the legacy in your term. You get one bite at the apple. This is yours. I hope you'll take it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. Come on down, ma'am.
Hello. As I mentioned earlier, after Mayor Marlowe had mentioned several times in the meeting on April 4th that the residents of Alachua County were excited for the building of a slaughterhouse to be built, we had canvassed the community to see what, if that was indeed the case. We came up with surveys specific to the residents of Alachua County, the students of the University of Florida and Santa Fe College. We asked them if they were aware of the plans and if they were okay with the money being spent on it, and if they would like a dismemberment facility in their neighborhood, and also if they would like to work in one. Unsurprisingly, the majority answered no. Of the residents we spoke with, most being flesh consumers, either had no idea of the proposed facility, were very upset to find out their tax money was going to be spent on it, and did not want a facility in their backyard. As someone who works with climate and animal save movements, including scientists, doctors, lawyers, and activists, I find it extremely ironic that anyone would propose to build a slaughterhouse in an environmental park and champion it as good for the environment when it would literally bring water, land, air pollution, and the smell of death and shit to this community. I personally visited several slaughterhouses of small and large scale. I've documented the horrible treatment of the animals, noted the land degradation surrounding the areas, and potent stench in the air at all of them. The only residents that would stand to benefit from this murder facility would be the ranchers and those that are marketing the body parts of the animals that are murdered there. Not the whole community would be benefited from this. I've heard talk of charging for local, charging more for local sourced meats that are not going to be accessible to all in your community. There are better ways to spend the resources and use the 15 acres of land, including planting trees and crops to feed the community. Farmers could transition their land to plant crops, open sanctuaries, Airbnbs, wedding destinations, or markets. And if anything is needed, I can offer references to those who are willing to transition. Right now, thetransformationproject.org is offering research and innovation grants for those who sign up by July 14th to help these farmers transition to growing crops, for example hemp and mushrooms. This would be so much more beneficial to this community than introducing toxic waste and sickness to this community. And I think that you should consider that and absolutely take those funds and listen to your community and stop making up lies and get them this road fixed and stop focusing on the slaughterhouse. Nobody wants it.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate those comments. And the last speaker, come on down, sir. I seem to remember excellent voice, right?
Well, you know, I truly appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Marlowe, for having us here. Thank you, Madam Chair, for being here as well. And all of our Commissioners, appreciate you all as well, attorney and everyone else. Thank you all for being here and being able to discuss these issues in such a nice way. I think that that's part of the beauty of being human, is that we get to discuss moral and ethics, and that's one of the reasons why I'm up here to talk about this today. I see that 337 is a big issue going on here and I think that I can speak for just about everyone when we say, "Let's get these roads fixed." And I also want to speak about, "Let's get our inner roads fixed for," you know, whatever traditions, religions that you may come from. I know we all come from different walks of life and I would never want to take those away from anybody, but really just to offer you some words of thought to enhance it some. That traditions and values, they evolve over time. We don't have to continue to do the same things that we were doing yesterday just because we were even, because there's a lot of things that have happened in my family that happened to me personally that I wouldn't necessarily want to continue on, although we came into this world doing things a certain way. So as soon as we get this road fixed, it really doesn't matter to me honestly what we do with the property, just as long as we're not going about slaughtering animals on it. So I just wanted to speak in opposition of the slaughterhouse. And I just really wanted to encourage everyone here on the board, all of our Commissioners, Mayor, and for our Madam Chair, if you could just hear us with open ears and open heart and open mind and allow new information to come in, you know, that's part of the evolution of society. So just please be open-minded whenever it comes to making these decisions because even here, I'm a Florida resident, I'm actually staying with Carrie at this time out on her animal sanctuary, and she is a resident here. And it's, no one wants to, no one wants to do the job themselves. That's why it goes to those in society that can't really find any other means to make money. They have horrendous, just a lot of baggage, PTSD, alcohol and drug abuse that goes along with that line of work for having to, you know, literally slit throats of innocent animals that have done nothing. We treat them like war criminals, we treat them like scum, and it comes back to bite us in the bum at the end of the day. Even for, you know, Vice Chair Mary there, she had to leave because, you know, I don't know what's going on with her brother in the hospital at this time, but she did apologize before leaving because she wanted to hear what we all had to say and she didn't want us to take it personally. And I guess I take this matter personally because whenever we hurt animals, we also hurt ourselves. And so there was a gentleman who went before the young lady who just spoke, who had said that there was some new health benefits found in grass-fed beef. And I just wanted to, for the record, give my email address, royce ashcroft@gmail.com because I would love to see those studies because there's a lot of studies that shows that actually we should be eating way less red meat, meat in general, dairy, eggs, animal products as a whole. So just wanted to remind everybody, yeah, think with your hearts, open minds, and everyone get home safely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. I think there was one question about how the environmental park got named environmental. I think it's because every aspect on it has something to do with the environment, so I wanted to answer that question. Just wanted to answer that question. I appreciate the motion from the County Commission, and at the risk of prolonging the night, I've listened very patiently to all sides of the arguments and I'm only going to offer this comment at the end of the night, prolonging the night, because I haven't ever heard anyone say this. The argument that does resonate with me, the conversation that resonates with me, is whether or not government should be involved here. I think that's a sincere question. But my answer to that question is the same answer that I give when people ask me, "Why is government involved in racial reconciliation?" And my answer is that it was government that wrote a constitution that said black people were three-fifths of human. It was government that passed Jim Crow laws. It was government that upheld those Jim Crow laws. Our small farmers are not losing to the ag corporations because they're less talented or less intelligent, they're losing because the ag corporations have lobbied government to create a system that they can't compete in. So when you say to me that government shouldn't be involved in solving a problem that government was instrumental in creating, I find that to be a shallow argument. And I think we are faced once again with another situation where government has inserted itself in the ag industry and has muddied the waters, has made it to where these small farmers cannot compete. So I applaud the county, I have no idea whether you guys will move forward with this project or not, I think it still depends on the operator, but I applaud you guys trying to address and trying to think outside the box. And I want to thank everybody for staying to the wee hours of the morning here tonight, and I'm sure we'll get the chance to do it all again tomorrow. Madam Chair, final word?
Thank you all for being here and thank you for sticking around so long. I just wanted to answer the one question that was about our hazardous waste and rural collection facility, and my staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but that facility is a place where people who don't have regular trash service can bring their waste and drop it off. We collect it there in receptacles where it is transferred to our transfer station, the Lilla Vita Brown Transfer Station, where it is then transferred again to the New River landfill or to the appropriate hazardous waste or recycling facility for processing. So it will not be a dump or a landfill of any sort, it will be simply a collection facility and that refuse will be moved to another place to be handled. And with that, thank you all for being here, and I'm sure, I think my Commissioners probably also want to say thank you, and we will say goodnight.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank everyone for staying late tonight. I'm really sorry that we were not able to have the discussion I think most of you came here for. I apologize for that. The road kind of took over the discussion and I was hopeful that we would be able to hear from citizens from Newberry and really the Commission from Newberry about how we wanted to either move forward or not move forward with the meat processing facility. So I want to apologize for that. To my colleagues, we will be discussing this tomorrow and we will have an opportunity to decide if we're going to continue the process or cancel the process. I think everyone knows where I am, I hope we cancel it. I've taken some notes, we've gotten a lot of emails since Friday. They had a meeting out here, I think Mayor Marlowe, you said on April 24th, there were 10 people against it, 15 people for it. The emails that I've been able to kind of track show 43 against it, 10 for it, and then tonight we had 18 against it and 3 for it. It's, you know, it's just data, it's not scientific or anything, but that comes to 71 against and 28 for, so right about 71%. So I hope my colleagues will think about that tomorrow, we'll have that discussion Yeah, well, from the meeting in Newberry on April 24th, it was 10 people against and 15 people for. And the people that are, if you live in Newberry, could you raise your hand? Okay, thank you. So anyways, I just want to thank everybody for staying past midnight. Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Mayor and Commissioners for staying, always a pleasure.